All right, well, welcome to everyone. I'm wearing my mask because I'm at City Hall. And I expect someone to be coming in shortly to give me some papers. But I want to welcome you all to the April 5th, 2021 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you're all joining us here tonight. Ms. Mester, please go ahead and read the notice and the roll call as well.
Thank you. The work session for this evening is being held pursuant to and in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operations during the COVID-19 declared emergency. City Council is present through electronic means, and all members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov, as well as on cable TV stations for FCC TV, Cox Channel 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. Council work sessions are conducted to allow members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is generally not invited to speak. However, public comment may be sent to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. All comments are provided in full to the members of City Council, and will be summarized at the next regular council meeting. And with that, Mayor, would you like me to do roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mayor Carter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a busy agenda tonight, so I'll just ask cooperation in keeping tonight's meeting moving. Before we get to the items on the agenda, just a couple of preliminary matters. Many of us were at a short ceremony in Cherry Hill Park next to the library just a few minutes ago, and recognizing April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And those who are going by will see the pinwills in front of the community center and also across from the library in honor of victims of abuse and remind us that we need to continue to do all we can to prevent that occurring in the future. I want to thank the Vice Mayor, who gave some remarks, and all who attended. So it was a very nice ceremony, and anyway. Secondly, the Falls Church News Press is celebrating 30 years of circulation, which is a very important milestone, and we wanted to congratulate Mr. Benton and his staff on their deep commitment to our community and this milestone event. We in Falls Church are very fortunate to have our own hometown newspaper covering local issues, and in today's age, that's increasingly rare, and I believe helps make Falls Church a very special place. So I think the newspaper helps bring our community together, provides local information that might not otherwise be available, and helps us, our citizens, be informed and as engaged as they are. I also think Nick deserves our admiration for nothing else but sitting through 30 years of city council meetings. But in all seriousness, our congratulations and thanks goes out to Nick Benton and the Falls Church News Press for this important milestone. And that's all I've got before we get started. Unless anyone else has anything, why don't we move to the first item, which is the FY 2022 budget? I don't know if Mr. Shields is back at his desk, or Ms. Bowe, would you like to handle this?
Well, I am back at the desk. I'll just say a quick, a few words of introduction. We are joined by our Chief Financial Officer, Kiran Bawa, and we're also joined by our Chief of Police, Chief Gavin, our Director of Public Works, Zach Bradley, and our Director of Housing and Human Services, Nancy Vincent. And our intention was to, if council had questions in those areas of the operating budget, we'd have staff available at this meeting to address those questions, and any that we can't address right here on the spot, we'll record and have a written response to council, and more broadly, any of the, any council budget questions, we'll get back in writing as well. I will just note that this year, our format is that the department directors have performed a budget briefing for the city council. So the main resources for the community and for the city council is the Budget Book, which is available electronically on the city's website at fallschurchva.gov/budget. And that's where all of the budget and the CIP information is. And there's also a link then where you can see these approximately five-minute briefings by each of our department directors, three minutes for some of our smaller divisions, to give council a good overview of the main issues and the main trends and the main initiatives that we're trying to address in this year's budget. I'll also say, by way of introduction, there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of work around the opportunities that are likely coming our way through three main federal pieces of legislation. The first, of course, is ARPA, the America Rescue Plan Act. That's already been signed into law by President Biden. But we do have significant questions in terms of exactly how those dollars can be used, and also what the dollar amount will be that is coming to the city. The Commonwealth of Virginia is somewhat unique in our status of independent cities. Across the United States of America, there are 41 independent cities, and 38 of those are located in Virginia. And so we have been told that it's possible that some of the initial spreadsheets that we saw allocating the dollar amounts to the city centers, to the cities in the Commonwealth of Virginia are being modified by the Department of Treasury. More to come on that. So our thought for the city council, we also have the appropriations process, which will allow earmarks, and we're working on an April 14th deadline, actually, for some of those earmarks to be submitted into Congressman Byer's portal. And then lastly, the third is the American Jobs Act, which is the infrastructure bill. And that also is something we're tracking for potential ability to fund important initiatives in the city. Cindy Mester has been our staff lead on tracking all three of those, working very closely with finance and working very closely with all of our colleagues across Virginia and the Virginia Government Finance Officers Association on getting answers to the questions that we know we all have. So our focus really, for the next two meetings, we think, would be just on operating budget questions, to make sure the council is fully briefed on what is in the budget and answer any questions that you have. And the April 19th date is when we hope we'll have answers, more information on some of these federal legislation, particularly the ARPA bill and its bearing on the city budget process, and have that discussion on April 19th prior to final action on the 26th. So that's a, sorry, I'm going on a bit long, but that's an introduction on our intention for the next couple of weeks on budget. So let me pause there to see if there are any questions just on that, sort of that broad overview, and then we could dive in a bit into the Public Works, Public Safety, and Housing and Human Services budgets.
All right, are there any questions? There are indeed. Mr. Duncan?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, what would you have April 19th for an answer to those very important, big questions about the three mysteries that are out there? That's pretty late in our cycle, right? I mean, that's a week before we go to final vote, we hope. What's your recommendation about how we behave between now and then in terms of looking at whether we could adjust the tax rate from the level that we discussed in our last meeting? Is that a discussion that we could, you know, entertain now, or should we wait until April 19th and things become clear?
So here's my suggestion, and that would be to, I know that's very much on the council members' minds, but I think first, maybe focus on the budget that's before us, and what's in it and what's not in it, so that you're well-informed about that. When it comes down to the tax rate, I think it's probably going to shake out like this, that we know in the federal legislation that local governments can choose to use that ARPA money to make up for lost revenue. And so there, you know, if you take the hotel tax or the meals tax, just to take two, we know we've experienced a loss of revenue. And so a policy choice that would be available to the city council is you could use some of the ARPA money to fill in for that lost revenue, on the hope that in, over the next two to four years, that hotel taxes will return to their pre-COVID levels, and meals taxes will as well, and we won't have a structural deficit. But if the council does use ARPA money for that, one, there's the potential, there's the risk that we could have that those revenues will not spring back. And then secondly, any monies that are used for that purpose would not be used for meeting some of our infrastructure needs or other capital needs that are the other kind of recommended uses of those ARPA dollars, along with pandemic response and the like. So I think that's sort of a broad outline, I think, that people can have in the back of their mind as they're working towards April 19th in our final markup session. I hope that's helpful to you, and that answers your question. We probably could spend all three weeks just talking about that one issue, but we don't have any new information beyond what I've just stated. And Cindy can certainly provide many more details, but I think that's the broad picture.
That's why I ask. Thanks for your response. Just one quick follow-up. So in terms of the things that the TOT and the meals tax would have paid for, that we didn't buy as much of or didn't do at all, those would be the gaps that certainly would be candidates to be filled if we felt that we weren't going to run into the risk of structural problems, which I don't think we will. I think we will, certainly within a year or two, spring back. But there are things in the budget that we passed last spring that would have been funded by the TOT or the meals tax that presumably did not get done because we had shortages in those areas. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. And I would say also that staff, and I think our colleagues with the school division, took a very, I think, very careful approach to this budget. And you'll hear it when we talk to all of our department directors of all the, you know, we're basically dealing with, other than personnel expenses, a flat budget since 2014. That's been the steady budget guidance since then. So contract costs have gone up, many other of those non-personnel costs have gone up. So there's a lot of pressure in the budget that, you know, we've tried to work through to come in with guidance up to this point, and you'll hear a little bit about how we've dealt with that pressure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, Wyatt, can you just clarify the comment about filling the budget gaps for meals and transit occupancy? It seemed like, when it started out, it sounded like that money's lost, so that money could be included in the budget, even if it wasn't allocated for a particular spend, which would give us a way to reduce the tax rate. However, based on how you finished up that answer to Phil's question, it sounds like if that money was to be earmarked for revenue that was lost, which hasn't been included in this budget, it would not be used to reduce the tax rate. It would be used to effectively fund things that we otherwise couldn't because of that lost revenue. Can you just clarify that?
Well, it could be used either way. Yeah, it could be used to fund unfunded initiatives, or it could be used to reduce the real estate tax rate.
Okay. A friend of mine last week had recommended that I personally clarify some messaging through my questions, so I'm going to attempt to do that here. Money that we would receive in that particular case to fill budget needs or fill lost budget revenue, would that create, and could we create a sort of sinking fund associated with that money, meaning if we've lost X dollars in transit occupancy tax money or X dollars in other areas, could we put a chunk of that in there to effectively draw down to pay for things going forward over that four-year period?
I don't follow that connection. I'm sorry. Like, so we're talking about a deficit, and you could use some of your, you know, the meals tax and hotel tax are both in FY 22 significantly lower in that budget, in the budget that's before you than where we were in 2019 or in 2020.
Right.
And so presumably, those will spring back. And so you could use some of the ARPA money, basically, to fill in that hole, so, and reduce the tax rate accordingly, or increase spending accordingly.
So I guess, maybe to ask it another way then, is, let's say we're off by $200,000 on one of those taxes, and we decide to put a million, well, say we decide to put $800,000 in that bucket for that particular tax, whether it bounces back or not, that gives us the ability to draw down on that amount over the next four years, and that money has to be spent to put it wherever we want?
Yes, that would be another way to use it, is to sort of parcel it out over four years to make up for that period of time where those revenues presumably will bounce back.
Okay. And I know it gets a little more complicated. Maybe we can talk about it in budget and finance, but I was doing some quick math this morning, looking at some of the other projects that are coming online that have been approved, both Founders Row and Broad in Washington. And based on my calculations, between those two projects, we've got about nine cents in net fiscal impact to the city. So about nine cents worth of income on an annual basis coming in. Can we have a conversation before April, or before our final budget deliberations, on exactly how that revenue has been factored into budgets going forward? I mean, that's a significant amount of money that goes beyond just organic revenue growth. And so this conversation about the tax rate, I'm looking at as an opportunity to make everyone whole, to deal with folks that may be upset because they haven't felt they haven't got the public services they've expected, making the city whole, the schools whole, getting everybody back to a place where they feel really good about numbers, and looking at that revenue that's coming in from just those couple of projects in the context of our budget. I mean, that's nine cents on the tax rate, just for those two projects, and that's recurring revenue. So as I was going through that this morning, working through those calculations, it certainly moved the needle more for me about us more aggressively attacking the tax rate to lower it, knowing that that money's coming in. But I don't have a good sense of how you and Kiran have incorporated that into our budget guidance going forward. So I'd like to, I'd like to have that in the context of this larger ARPA money discussion, too.
All right. Other questions or comments? Did Ms. Bowe have a presentation, Mr. Shields, or just available for questions?
So, yeah, we really wanted to use our council time together on Q and A, and so the presentations were made virtually by video.
Got it. Thank you so much for those as well. Those were quite good. Do we have any questions from council for Bowe or Mr. Shields? All right, Mr. Duncan?
Well, I just wanted to ask, are we going to talk to Mary and Zach and Nancy in this timeframe, or?
That was, that was the intent. So, you know, for instance, one of the questions that we've gotten on public safety is on the deployment of mental health assistance with our police department. So we're aware of that question and prepared to discuss that. We'd also like to just, you know, give a council an update on other, kind of the, you know, the issues with respect to 911 dispatch and public safety and other issues like that. So maybe we could start with public safety, if council would like to start there. Let me just see if, I think there was a hand up. Was that? Maybe, maybe let's start the Q and A with public safety, then we'll go to Housing and Human Services, and then we'll end up with Public Works.
All right, Mr. Duncan, do you have any questions on that front?
Do we have questions now, or do they want to start with something off the bat? I'm happy to ask a couple of questions. I don't want to hog the mic, though.
Okay. Mr. Shields, did they have presentations they wanted to give, or just start with questions?
Why don't we just say, you know, the presentation was by that video, but Chief Gavin, if you had like a hello, and then we could take questions from there.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for having me. I'm certain many of you have probably reviewed my summary budget in regards to the changes that we foresee in 22, FY 22. I know that there's been an inquiry about, do we have all the resources that we need in regards to moving forward with public safety? I will tell you, we do not. It's been a challenge. I'm going to speak to you very frankly in regards to resources in terms of personnel, our most treasured resource in the city. And I can speak for public safety, but I know I speak for a lot of department directors with the number of people that we have working under each department. We have one for one in terms of job descriptions and positions, and when we get into, you know, when we get into freezing two positions like they have, we have in the past year, when we get into COVID conditions, when we get into essentially some of the mental health issues that we've had with staff. My staff authorized strength is 34. This year, I've been probably working on a number of 29, just because of all of the circumstances I just listed. And I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, in 1977, the city had 30 police officers, and 45 years later, I'm at 29 functioning. And each year, it's much more difficult. And year after year, we have gotten into this escalating growth of population, and we're, we have pulled efficiencies almost to a fault at this point. Every, I mean, most of my week this week has been trying to figure out a schedule for employees to work, and we're getting to this point where people are not getting days off, they're not getting, they're not getting the regular schedule. It is, it's a bit overwhelming. I've been fortunate enough as a director, as you know, to have a comprehensive review from the community itself that recognizes the pressures, not only inside the organization, but the external pressures from our society as a whole on public safety. And, you know, we're heavy users internally. Let's just talk about that. We, we press hard on the city attorney's office. We have high IT needs. We have demanding human resource needs, and all of those departments, too, are suffering from low staffing. And with the escalating growth of population and projects in the city, we really need to figure out how we can responsibly sustain our service and responsibly grow. I will tell you, and I've told you in the past, when I go to hire someone, you know, an officer, it takes me 18 months to get them out on the street. And freezing two positions in this past year and just playing catch-up, it's going to take me 18 months to get a fully fledged officer out on the street, which is another year. I, quite frankly, have had officers and civilian employees out on mental health disability for more than six months to a year. I've had COVID, I've had COVID cases with people out for six months to a year. So there's a lot of internal pressure. There's burnout. There is an equity in pay in terms of the region. External risks and threats, I would dare say, are the calls for service that are increasing. The other day, was simply looking up, why is it that it took us an hour to get to a noise complaint? And I was ready to kind of figure out, you know, what are we doing out there? And I went to go look for the calls for service, and they had a suspicious death in a hotel, they had a hit-and-run, they had a lost wallet, they had like five other calls for service before they could even approach the individual who called. And that was kind of a, that was a busy night, but it was nothing like last Thursday, where we had, you know, a, almost the robbery-type theft at the Target. We had a very serious pedestrian injury. We had 505 Roosevelt go up with lots of fire and evacuated the whole building, and that was just three calls for service. While those calls for service were...
I was going to say, Chief, we've got, I think we're getting the idea there. Why don't, we do have a lot to get through tonight, and I think we understand the general nature of your concerns. Why don't we go ahead and open up questions to you, since we do have a whole lot more to get through before the night is done? Vice Mayor Connolly, did you have any questions for the chief, or are they on another matter?
No. Well, I do have a question. I want to thank you for all you're doing, and having heard you at budget time. I know how deeply you live all of this and feel all of this, and your concern for your staff. So my question to you is, what can we do? Can we do more than what is in this budget? As a request, what can we do to keep our community safe? We're entrusting it to you, and you're telling us you need more.
I do. I am. You know, when we get budget guidance as peers, between all the directors within the city, we do recognize that we all are kind of suffering from the same type of pressures. And we all depend on each other to get things through, maybe IT, HR, you know, treasurer's office, all of us are leaning on each other. So we understand that it's not one department that can take off, but we do need more people throughout. And I know I've been asked questions in regards to the mental health, and the officers may have approached you on that. We do have numbers on that for your questions later on that. But responsibly growing city government, and getting our employees to a place where they feel like their workload is somewhat balanced. We do have people that are, I dare say, are feeling the pressures, and the stresses is coming out in a lot of different ways. But I think it is the minimum staffing and that, in the nature in which we have staffed government, and we're at a crucible. We're at a crucible where we have grown so much in the city on the external, and we have not grown in city government. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Anything else, Vice Mayor Connolly?
No, thank you.
Ms. Hardy? Ms. Hardy?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I know it's been a trying year for public safety, so I appreciate all the hard work. To address some of the concerns you shared, we don't need it now, but perhaps in the Q and A, if we could get benchmarked in terms of our size of our force compared to jurisdictions of our size and population and crime rate, that would be helpful. Because I do hear the statistic that you mentioned often, that we are same-sized staff as our force as we were in 1970. So I think having some numbers in front of it would be helpful, especially any other comparable jurisdictions, you know, with similar demographics as ours would be good, too.
Okay.
And then, Wyatt, a request I had made previously, but I didn't see in the latest council questions, is around the pay equity that Chief Gavin raised. How are we doing against other jurisdictions in terms of, you know, median salary, for example, for various job types that we have in city government? Again, I think that's something that's important to us, to make sure we are doing a good job of. So perhaps in the next round of Q and As, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I think at the April 12th meeting, we will have Steve Mason there just to talk about compensation and that realm of questions.
Great. And then, specific to public safety, I guess I did have one of the questions around, you know, what would it take for us to pilot kind of that mental health first model? So between what Use of Force Committee recommended, hearing your concerns around, you know, the burnout and overload, and hearing firsthand from officers that often mental health calls can take more than a whole shift to take care of, both from inefficiency as well as outcomes at the end of the day for our residents, it feels like doing things differently is a real opportunity for us here, even if it's going to be painful in the short... Even if it's gonna be painful in the short term to kind of get it up and running, the long-term benefits in that we are delivering better public safety and more efficient public safety, you know, could be a great outcome. So what would it take for us to do it, and then how can we support you on that?
It's a great question, and I actually, I did a data dump today, just quickly. We did 122 mental health calls in the last two years, which is significant. Most of them are cooperative voluntary. Some are emergency custody orders. We take out to diversion first with Maryfield, which is our community service board. Some go to Arlington. Most of all of them are voluntary, or if they're not, they're taken out. And diversion first is a wonderful program and probably the model program in this state. We do have some that regardless if we get like a co-responder plan where you have mental health worker working with the officer, the officer still has to retain or be with the mental health professional. So it's not gonna relieve them so much of time and attendance there. It will de-escalate things. Fairfax County's CSB right now is doing a pilot project in Fairfax County where they're having, West Springfield and Mount Vernon districts are having a mental health worker ride along with the officers. It, after talking to the police psychologist today who started there, because I remember when he started, I said, you know, "Kobe, take me through how that starts." And he said, "It is a process. It's a cultural change. It needs more data. It definitely needs best practice and policy around it before it can be just kicked off." And we can't, we cannot necessarily just hire a mental health worker and then put them on the street with us. We have to kind, we have to go through the umbrella of the CSB. And we also have, you know, first diversion first. We don't want to mess with any of those protocols there that are working well. But it is. It's a heavy load. It's increasing heavy load. I went through about 80 of the reports today just to kind of get a feel what we're responding to. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of depression out there, let's just say. And there's a lot of, you know, officers responding to these calls where there's domestics-related, domestic-related, but they're, they're internal family issues because, you know, maybe somebody with, is on a spectrum or there's a severe learning disability or mental health issues, and the officers are negotiating that mainly out to our Maryfield system. Our Maryfield system relieves us of a lot of time, diversion first, because Fairfax County has committed a sheriff to receive our people by referral. And then they watch them, and so it cuts us loose back into the city. But, you know, mental health calls are significant. They're dangerous. In those, in my litany of how many calls of service we went through just here recently in the last week, two of our people were committed to mental health calls during a lot of that, you know, that, those major incidents that we had to pull them off. So it is, it's a, it's a heavy load, but it's something that we, we're not gonna be relieved of just by hiring a mental health worker. So we need to work with Fairfax. We'll get the data. We'll keep you posted. We have been asked to put into the rotation of this pilot program. And we'll continue to go down this path to ensure that we are in the city, you know, giving best practices and making sure those vulnerable, very vulnerable populations are getting everything that they want and deserve.
Thank you. I was about to ask kind of what it would take for us to be part of that pilot. I mean, maybe there is some benefit with us being a smaller jurisdiction to be included in the next pilot. That's something I certainly would support. I know the other approach that we've taken so far is getting more of our officers CIT trained.
Yes.
I forget, Chief Gavin, what percentage we are versus what your desired goal was. But is that something that we can help support with budget?
No, it doesn't matter. We are, that does not hit our budget. I anticipate by December 2021, December 2021, that 95% of our officers will be CIT trained and all of patrol will be CIT trained. We have a CIT train-the-trainer in Jennifer Wood, who actually helps Fairfax County train this program. She is also offered for, for any council member to come out and visit for an hour or two during that training when it's in place. So we'll keep you up on that, so you can go out and see exactly what the officers are being trained in. It's a 40-hour course. I've asked them that I wanted all of operations trained by the end of the year, which is a heavy lift. But I think that they can do it. We have about a third of the dispatchers that are trained. And then, working towards, I think about a half of Criminal Investigations Unit. But it's a goal to have everyone trained, to include myself.
So besides CIT training and then kind of embedding a mental health professional, are there different or other models that we should be thinking about to kind of prioritize mental health in the way we do policing?
I tell you, this, this past year, we've had some cases that have really stretched our resources in terms of, you know, people, one family in particular that was very violent. And we kept going back to the same house, and it was about a number of nuisance-type calls. And we worked really hand-in-hand with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. You know, so we're reaching out to Commonwealth Attorney's Office. We're reaching out to the CSB. We're reaching out to family members. We have tried to negotiate transportations with those that are not violent, with the GS4 transportation pilot model. We have, we're, we're in a very good place in terms of our numbers and our training in terms of the size that we are now. We communicate a lot. You know, the ones that we are repeat offenders or repeat, I get customers, I should say, not offenders so much, but repeat. We have them all listed in our CAD system. They're alerted when the officers obviously get there. We make sure we have a C or try to get a CIT person there. And we, and we, we debrief on these consistently. We do also, in a complement of this, is we've also upped our game with the less-than-lethal force, meaning if we get into, someone pulls a knife on you and there's mental health issues in terms of getting types of, I don't even call it weaponry, but tools that we can capture people or deflect risk and threats to officers. We've just purchased what they call the BOLO wrap, which is an actual, I equated to like Spider-Man, where they actually put out a kind of a rope or a web that actually captures people so you can, can use less-than-lethal force in these type of instances. So we're doing a lot to look at it holistically as a community. I will certainly be the first one to tell you, if there's anything out there that we can, we can garner some help from. And we will keep pushing Fairfax County CSB to put us in the rotation. And that's what Juwan Chetree, Captain Chetree, has been doing. He's getting all the statistics. He's telling them, you know, "Put us on the rotation. We're next." And we're small enough, to all the city council, we're small enough to know our people, and they know us. They know me, you know, comfortable enough to call me at home, or not home, but call me directly on my cellphone to say, "This is what I've got going on, and this is what I need from you." Maybe be residents or business owners. They all seem to know who to contact and get personal service. So I'm proud about that. I mean, you know, small cities are able to do that.
So we've got a lot more questions from a lot of folks in a lot of different areas. Why don't I just ask, if we could, to maybe let, move on to someone else right now, and we'll come back to you, Ms. Hardy, as time allows. But we do have some other folks with questions. We got two other departments to roll through. Would that be all right?
Sure. I'll have one more that I'll save for the end.
Okay. Ms. Hiscott?
Let me ask many of my questions, and the chief answered many of them. I just want to echo my support for, you know, as you determine what that ideal staffing level is, Chief, that when we're looking at this budget, this year's budget, that we're ensuring that we're providing a police department that keeps us safe and keeps your officers healthy and well and, you know, on the streets as much as possible. And if there's anything that we, as councillors, can do to help in communicating to Fairfax regarding the pilot program or any support we can provide there in terms of our interest and our support of such a pilot rotation, please let us know. I think those are key and critical components to address in our overall policing.
I do think if, if we go to a training class and you all come for an hour just to review it, your presence would be huge and well-received.
All right, Mr. Duncan? Mr. Duncan, are you there? Do you have a question for the chief? All right, does anyone else have a question?
I'm sorry. I was trying to get to my button. There I am. Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your video. We share your desire to be a leader in public safety service and restorative justice. I want to ask a couple of questions. I know we've been at this a while, but these are some things that came up as I was listening to your remarks. The first has to do with body cameras. The explanation of how that program would work was, is, I'm not yet clear on it. So as I understand it, $100,000 in grant money comes from someone for research planning and deploying body-worn cameras. So where's that money coming from? When is it coming? And what does that get us? Because as I understand, there's another $45,000 in annual recurring costs to maintain the camera system and some staffing required to monitor it and respond to FOIA requests and so forth. I guess my question is, I know the Use of Force Committee advocated for this. You know, a department our size, given all the other budget pressures that we have, where, where are we getting the money for this? And when in the budget year is it realistic to assume that our officers would all have body-worn cameras? Is that like a throw-the-switch thing, or is it, you know, six or eight months into the, into the fiscal year?
Okay. So we applied for a grant. We anticipate getting the money before the end of FY '21, I believe. It's a grant for $50,000 with a matching local fund for $50,000. That is $100,000. We will get, receive 40 body-worn cameras. There is already an established infrastructure that supports those cameras, meaning we have an in-car camera system that has a server and has the systems of download, antennas, all of that within our, within our current infrastructure. The reoccurring cost of $45,000 is for any type of replacement, training, and storage of all of the video that will be acquired. And I think you're looking at eight hours of video for each officer a day. It's significant. The, then, I think what some of the costs that we're kind of out there on is, what is it gonna cost us in terms of FOIA on, or court preparation? We're just not quite sure. Right now, it is kind of complex in regards to the in-car camera stuff. We have, you know, up to two hours sometimes of camera footage for DUI, a simple DUI. But right now, in today's world, in terms of accountability, transparency, body-worn cameras are a must. And not only is the public demanding it to include the Use of Force Review Committee, but the officers want it, because there's so many claims against officers. We want to have the right story, and, and they want the right story out there. And oftentimes, what now is happening, if you do not have video footage, you don't have a case. Because that's the expectation. And so where the in-car camera has been wonderful for the city, the body-worn camera now is getting to the place where if you don't have video, it's not believable. And so you see that this past week at Virginia Beach, when they had the active shooter and the officer didn't turn on the video, it all automatically drew question as to what his actions were, which is unfortunate. So it's almost a, an expectation.
Okay, well, I reserve the right to learn more about this topic. I understand that body-worn cameras are, you know, mostly a good thing for the officer on the beat because of what you said. Most of them are doing their job the way they should be. It is an enormous cost for a jurisdiction of our size. And just something that gives me pause as we look at all the other priorities in the budget and even within your own budget. I mean, to me, I would pay patrol officer more upfront in order to attract and retain a caliber of, you know, officer who's not gonna get into the troubles that body cams sometimes display. But I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole. The mayor will have it. I would like to learn more about this, because, so it's $50,000 that we've got to match to get the 50, to get the $100,000 total to get into this game. And then there'll be an additional $45,000 or so annually. So that's, that is a sizable expense. Let me ask just one other quick question. The vice mayor, I think, asked a question in the, in the Q and A document about whether the police radios, and we're gonna also invest in a new radio system, too, in this budget year, the police radios communicate with the school staff's radios. And as I read the answer, the answer is, is no. They don't.
Right.
Explain, explain to me why, why that is, why that is a good thing.
Right. We do have, the schools obviously have an SRO, and the SRO has a school radio. And indeed, when we do have incidents, we have a shared radio on our command bus where we can hear the schools communicating. The school's communication radio is not a police radio, nor would we want them to have a police radio for operational purposes. We just don't have police radios in the general public and/or outside of a trusted. I'm not saying the schools aren't trusted, but you just don't give anybody a police radio for it to be subject to be taken or stolen. They're expensive. We do have the ability always to contact the school. Some of our protocol when we have an incident with a school is to marry up an administrator with our police command post. The communication goes pretty smoothly there. Eyes on the ground, boots on the ground is our SRO when he's in the, when he's at the school. That is a direct communication for the schools with a police radio. So we do have solutions. We do have, as you're made aware of, is that we do, and to Tony Jones's credit, we do have cameras in the school that allow for us to view the hallways through our police dispatch.
Okay, well, we don't want to give away too many of our secrets to bad guys, so I don't want to go further too much into that. But, you know, I mean, I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, if there's an incident at the schools, you know, we have a plan. We have cameras. We have a certain amount of radio capacity. But, you know, it sounds to me like if I were the first one to respond up there, I'd whip out my cellphone and try to call somebody on the staff and establish some line of communication. But I don't know. I mean, it's, you just have so little time if there's an incident at a school for, you know, the command bus to get up and running and so forth. Anyway, I'm sorry. One other question about technology. The expansion of body camera, the expansion of camera signal monitoring and so forth. There's a staff cost associated with that, too, of course. But also, my question was about equity. If we're not gonna be pulling as many people over in person, in other words, with the officer pulling a car over on Broad Street for speeding, say, the stand-in apparently is gonna be to monitor red lights and stop bus, bus stop signs and, and speed limits, too. Do those mechanisms tend to capture the equity issues that we have with personal stops? Or how do we, how do we use our discretion in, in those situations? I mean, if the camera says something, we just issue a ticket, right? There's no real black, there's no real gray.
Yeah, it's, you know, the focus of those cameras is, you know, the violation itself, right? And, yeah, there is no, you know, there's no racial issue there in terms of the way that the, you know, the difference between a human making a stop is that, you know, they do. They, there, there is a human interaction. There is a bias. How do we protect against any type of discrimination is, you know, you know, I have a lot of discussions in regards to fairness. I have a lot of intention in terms of getting a diverse workforce. I have a very, very diverse workforce. In addition to that, the state has mandated the community policing data program where we have to, month by month, report out each and every stop. where we have to, month by month, report out each and every stop and all of the demographics of each stop, why we stopped them, where they searched, and where they charged. Not only do we have to do that, and that's a state-mandated, computer-generated data that we have to dump every month, but we have to do that come July 1st with every person we stop on foot. So, the state has legislated a lot of practices for the police that are to guard against those type of biases or discrimination. I would dare say that, you know, the traffic stops, obviously during COVID, have decreased significantly as have the photo enforcement. Photo enforcement's only in two intersections in the city. The stop arm will be on 24 buses. And speed cameras, if they come, will only be in school zones and construction zones during those specific hours. There is a lot, as you know, on side streets, concerns with community. You cannot replace that the officer is invaluable in making stops, and they will continue to make those stops as we assign details out there for hotspots. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure. I'm just going to ask a series of questions that then we can get answers to later on. So, the request is potentially for more police officers. What specifically would the additional police officers do? And that goes right down to shifts and things like that. Second question is, what other mechanisms can we use? We've talked about mental health with regard to having to stay with the clients. What other things can we do to reduce what I'll call secondary responsibilities for a police officer? Third issue is, what should we be advocating in terms of automated speed enforcement going forward? And finally, are any of the budget issues that we're talking about, should they be resolved through some sort of regional funding or program? Those are my questions. They all go to maximizing, of course, public safety, an objective that all of us share, but gets at some questions that haven't been asked. Thank you.
All right, and you're okay with those being answered separately, Mr. Snyder?
Yes, I am. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, Ms. Hardy? I know you have one. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Yes, going back to my request on benchmarking, if we could actually do it by function, that would be helpful. To be able to know, you know, how many officers or patrol ones versus parking enforcement versus detectives, or, you know, whatever the other job functions are within public safety, Chief. Again, I want to make sure that, you know, we are benchmarking versus other comparable jurisdictions or crime rates. I think just knowing how it breaks down within the 34 sworn officers and 15 non-sworn. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Hardy. This is just a real quick one. And that is, Chief Gavin, one of the things that I've heard from the treasurer's offices, sometimes there's a backlog of tickets that have been issued that don't get processed in time and people want to pay them. Is there a position in this budget that's going to solve that problem?
I tell you, we are trying to solve that problem. Part of it is personnel, part of it's IT. And so, we're trying to think of different solutions on the personnel that we have here now that can get into the IT systems that can actually effectively do it at the day in which they're written. The other thing that we could look into, and we've looked into in the past, but there have been IT barriers, is to automate that entry when the ticket is written. There are systems and solutions out there that, we actually got a grant back in the Obama days that our IT systems found to be incompatible. So, I don't know, I don't have the research on me now, but there are E-systems out there that will actually self-populate the system.
Yeah, and I would support any funding that would need to go into making sure that that could happen. Because that seems like a, one of those things that would pay for itself in the end and would just make things a lot more efficient all through.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I've got a question or two. So, you mentioned earlier that you have some officers who've been out six months to a year with COVID and/or mental health. Can you elaborate on that? Seems like an awful long time for COVID, for example.
We did have one officer that came on. He was in field training. He contracted COVID. He was very serious case. He was on late duty for probably seven to eight months and then had to go back through field training for another 14 weeks. And has just recently graduated from field training. So, he was 11 months into being off. I had another one that went out on a mental health issue in August and came back in like January. And, you know, they're all personnel issues, but they're on the books. You're paying them as employees, but we can't use them as fully functioning police officers because they have to be fit for duty. And, you know, officer has to be fit physically, mentally for duty to be able to be a viable person out on the street. And if a doctor is saying that they cannot do this based on their condition, we can't put them out there. And we can't overhire and assume somebody immediately to take over that position. So, here we are, you know, a year in paying somebody with essentially a vacancy, but we're not, we're, you know, fully staffed and can't use them. And it's not like...
So, I presume these people though are back in the saddle now? It sounds like, from what you said, both of them.
Yeah, one of them, like I said, just graduated from field training last week. And then the other one is back in the saddle. But, you know, that is, that's the precautionary tale of public safety.
Sure, but they are back now, so that was a tough year with them out. But it looks like they're back in now, which should help out. All right, that's great. So, look, we do have two other departments to get through. We were supposed to finish this part of the conversation by 8:30, not just this part, but the entire conversation. So, I want to thank you, Chief Gavin. I know there's a lot going on. It's a very difficult, challenging time for you and your department. And we greatly appreciate the fine work you're doing on behalf of the citizens of Falls Church. Certainly more to come as far as city council goes, but again, our thanks to you. Mr. Shields, let's move on to the other departments. I don't know who you want to call next. You there, Mr. Shields?
Yeah, Nancy Vincent and then Zach Bradley.
All right, Nancy, you're up. Do you have anything you want to say? A short introduction, or should we get straight to questions?
I'll be very short. So, I do want to thank all the council members who came out for the dedication of the Pinwheel Garden this afternoon. It will be there for the entire month and it's, and I've got mine as well. It's a good reminder to the community to be aware of child abuse and how to report it if we have suspicions. So, the department is Aurora House Housing and Human Services, and then the contracts. Aurora House was 24/7 through the pandemic and provided a safe place for these young women. The staff were wonderful and it's been a very successful program. Housing and Human Services provided financial assistance through the pandemic to more than 70 households. By way of comparison, it was, the previous year was eight. And it was done through the dedication and the hard work of the staff. I mean, there are people in our community who are suffering, who are scared, who are hungry. And the assistance and the work that the staff put on their shoulders to make sure that these people had the services they need was really something that, you know, I want the council and the community to be really proud of. And I would venture to say that the residents of Falls Church are served as well, but I believe better than any of the jurisdictions in the region. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you again and your staff. This is a difficult, challenging time for your department as well. Let's open it up to questions and comments for Ms. Vincent. Any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Hardy?
Hi Nancy, thank you again for the Pinwheel Garden. I'm glad we were able to continue that tradition, I think five years now. I think I read in the budget book that we've sent about $400,000 in rent relief from COVID. Have we noticed in the recent months that trend debating? And is that something that we anticipate needing the ARPA funds for? Do we still have leftover amounts from CARES I and CARES II?
The, there are still many households who need assistance, who are, we know the job market is still not coming back, particularly restaurants, Uber drivers, and others in the community. The state now has a rental assistance program, the Virginia Rental Relief Program, they call it. And so, our residents are able to apply through that program. It can provide up to 15 months of rent assistance. And so, this has been the first month that our residents have been able to kind of take advantage of that program.
Got it. And so, we don't anticipate needing to fund it locally? That is what I'm hearing.
Well, not to the extent that we have been doing, that we have been. A little bit of funding for those families who don't qualify for the assistance. And then also, there's, we've had several families who have needed utility assistance and then food. And so, we'd like to continue to do that locally.
And are those things going to be funded, again, we're requesting out of the ARPA funds or from CARES I, CARES II, or just the regular operating budget in the city?
There's been a small amount out of each of those.
Okay. I also had a question about, kind of, given that we contract our mental health support services through Fairfax County and through COVID, I think in general, we're seeing that there's probably increased usage with everyone being isolated. Are we billed based on actual usage and has the cost for that fluctuated the past year?
Our payments to the Department of Family Services are based on population, for the most part. So, it's a percentage of population. Through the Community Services Board, it is, it's getting to the point where we're a little bit under population, so we're playing a little bit of catch-up to get to that population base. There are some services that are paid for by usage as well. And so, we do pay for our residents to take advantage of those services. But the bulk of the services are based on population.
Okay. And then my last question had to do, I think in the budget book, you noted, kind of, this coming budget year, being able to apply for the next Amazon grant. And so, hopefully, we'll have additional conversations on what those opportunities are, whether it's expanding a homeownership one that we won this past year or kind of some new innovative thing to, you know, build, start some local voucher program to, you know, buy down rent in existing buildings is something I'm interested in discussing more as well. So, more of a placeholder for future discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Nancy. I'm sorry that I missed the Pinwheel ceremony this afternoon. I had a board meeting of another group that I had to attend. I did put something up on my Facebook page about it, so I was there in spirit. But, you know, I know that we have...
You're behind me.
We have a reputation for dropping everything and doing our city business, but a little more advanced notice would have helped. So, Mike could have moved my other meeting, but at any rate, a personal matter. The only thing I want to say about your area is, it just seems obvious that, you know, this is where a lot of the money that's coming from the state and federal government needs to go into because so many of our problems, rent, food, you know, shortages of any kind, mental health, were, you know, made worse, if not outright caused by COVID. So, as we look at the budget for this department, let's not miss any opportunity to use the assistance money that we're getting to do more of the good work that we know that you do and to get some help paying for it. So, as we go forward in the budget, I'd like to see what you and manager have to suggest about, you know, using the state and federal monies to the maximum extent possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Other questions, comments from Ms. Vincent? All right, thank you so much. Let's move on to, unless there's any other further questions or comments, let's move on to our next speaker.
And that would be Mr. Bradley.
All right, Mr. Bradley? Do you have any commentary comments you'd like to make?
I'll be super brief. Thank you for letting me be here and answer your questions tonight. I just want to thank all of DPW, notably the operations staff, who have run thin through the last year through COVID. And wanted to thank them for their dedication and hard work. Also, want to note that outside of the budget presentation that everybody watched, there's also kind of echoing what Chief Gavin said. There's some equity issues up in DPW operations with pay scales, buildings, some of the fleet is quite old. All being worked through right now, with some with Wyatt and Steve, others with Robert Goff and the staff up at the yard. So, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you very much. We know this has been a tough year on you all as well, so thank you. Our first question comes from Mr. Duncan. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zach, thank you for your video. It was very good. So, my question goes to one of the things you brought up, which is our paving program. We're putting more money into our street paving program, which is a good thing. But tell me how that works. In past years, my understanding was, you know, there's only a certain number of months in a year that we can do paving. And we're a pretty small client for most paving companies. And so, we tend to get put at the end of the list. Are we going to be able to spread that paving money out over 12 months? No, I think is the answer to that. But I just want to understand how you're going to deploy that in a way that will, you know, get more paving done, but not shut the whole town down in August for, you know, a whole batch of paving? Because it used to be that most of the paving got done, you know, in the late summer months. How's that going to work in the next fiscal year?
Yeah, so we do only have, just shy of $400,000 of paving and FY '22, which is one lane mile of roadway, or sorry, a little less than two lane miles of roadway. And we have about 80 lane miles in the city. So, percentage-wise, it's not exactly a ton of paving. We are going to split that in the, I'll say, the late summer and the fall. So, it's like September through October, November. And then we would have our, I guess I'll call it a second phase, if you will, that would start up April through June timeframe somewhere in there. I think you hit the nail on the head, though, with $400,000. That puts $200,000 kind of in each section. That's not a whole lot of money. That's an extremely low-volume customer. So, we're kind of at the contractor's mercy as far as scheduling goes. But we would break it out into kind of two phases.
Okay, good. Helpful to know. Recycling center, so we're ending up paying a good bit of money for the recycling center now. I just want people to be aware that recycling is, you know, highly placed community value here, but it also is coming with a pretty significant price tag now. So, in your document or your remarks, you mentioned about, you know, looking for ways to cut that down. Do you have any ideas about how that might happen, or is this just the price of doing business now?
I think part of it's COVID-driven. So, we've effectively doubled our pickups since COVID happened. Glass and cardboard are notable, all of them.
People drinking more and ordering more from Amazon? I mean, what?
Yeah, that might be it. But yeah, so, once we're through COVID, we're kind of getting back to, I'll say, normal, if you will. We're hopeful that those pickups drop back down to one per week, which will effectively cut that program in half. So, right now, there's about 120,000 budgeted for it. If we're able to cut that back in half, we'll be down to 60,000. And I think previous years, prior to our vendor change late last year, I think we were around that $45,000 to $50,000 mark. So, it won't be as big of a hit if services resume as they were.
Okay, well, that's encouraging to hear, I think. My other question is about traffic signals and the timing thereof. You know, in the Atlantic presentation that's coming up here, there's some discussion about traffic, you know, volumes and management and so forth. And traffic engineers seem to believe that, you know, some degree of improvements can occur with traffic signalization improvements. And that's great. I mean, if that can happen as part of a new development project, that's good. But can we do it before then? Or is it a cost that is just so significant that, you know, we really need the private sector's help to bear it when we do these development projects?
I think that's a complicated answer, so bear with me. And if I don't answer it fully, let me know. So, there's kind of two parts. You have your overall signal network that communicates to each other. Um, in our case, ours is legacy. It's very outdated. It's, it's rather old. Um, when we got it, it was discontinued shortly after. Um, so upgrading that would help. Uh, and then second, you know, large scale changes, uh, that, that are going to have an impact throughout the city are quite expensive. They're, you know, to, to go through, get the traffic count you need, go and go through the iterative process, um, it, it's probably in the realm of 50 to 80,000 dollars, depending on, uh, what kind of changes you're looking at making and how, how extensive they are. Um, so when the developers come in, they're, they're looking at their project and kind of the immediate vicinity of it. So, um, I guess for example, uh, Founder's Row, which is pretty close to starting to come online, um, and they'll start putting up some of their new signals here shortly. Um, you know, they didn't necessarily look all the way down at Broad and Washington for their study, nor, nor would we have asked them to. So if, if you're looking for a holistic citywide approach, that's a significant amount of money. Uh, and that's part of what, uh, we did. When was that? It was in the last few years. I think we just did new signal timings in 2019 or 2020. Um, so the, the, those will come due, you're supposed to do those every like three or so years. Um, so that's coming due regardless. And then, yeah, the, uh, like I said, the, the developers are isolated around their area to make sure they're not making an impact, um, maybe one or two signals away.
Okay. All right. Well, that's helpful information. I think public needs to know that these improvements are costly and that the private sector with developments helps us bear those. And, uh, that's just fact, the fact of fiscal reality that we come to grips with, I think. Lastly, obviously your area, stormwater management, you talked about that a good bit in your video. Um, and that's topic we'll talk about more later, I assume. There's no clarity yet, right, Mr. Manager or Cindy Esther, about whether, you know, the monies that we're getting from the state and feds can be used for storm water? It just says water and sewer. It's not clear if it's clean, clean water or, we don't, we don't have an answer on that quite yet, do we?
That's correct. We do not have a U.S. Treasury guidance on infrastructure definition, water, sewer, and broadband, as you noted. I do believe that there are ways to use the federal money as a result of revenue loss, economic impact, to cover cash versus debt service. So there may be a way through that mechanism. We can look at stormwater. So we are looking at that because stormwater, traffic signals, IT, there, there could be a, a variety of areas we can target that. Just can't say definitively until we see the U.S. Guidance to make sure we're interpreting those four broad categories accurately. But no definition on stormwater specifically yet.
Looking forward to learning more about that. Obviously that's an area of huge fiscal impact for us in this year's budget. Okay, thank you, Zach.
Uh, Ms. Hiscott?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that when, um, we have the HR benchmarking on pay issues, I think it was, uh, a week from now, talking about the budget, that we really understand what's, um, happening with the DPW folks. I understand there's, um, pretty big differential from what, uh, some of our folks have been able to get from other pretty close jurisdictions in terms of, uh, pay per hour. So please, um, can we make sure we understand that at the next meeting? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
Thank, thank you. When we did the bridge dedication, um, VDOT, um, offered, um, them as an alternative, perhaps to other contractors that we'd use, not only on big projects, but on small projects. And I'm wondering if that can be pursued to determine if that might be a more cost effective way to get some of the, um, the, um, the paving, the sidewalks, the roadway, um, perhaps done more cost effectively. So I just put that question on the table for answer later on. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. Hi Zach. My question for you is another personnel related question. That is, the, the, one of the biggest things you are going to be dealing with in your department in fiscal year 2022 is the retirement of Mr. Goff. And, um, I, in your video, you had some ideas, I think it was your video, ideas about how you're going to deploy personnel differently in, in order to be able to, um, to balance things out. And I'm just wondering, how's that going? Is that, do you, how, how are you going to fill that hole in your department?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, the, the basic premise is, uh, uh, obviously Robert has been with us for 40 years. He does a lot. He does more than, um, I could reasonably ask anybody that's filling his shoes to do. Um, but what, what, what we're able to do, I guess, as, as a, for instance, uh, Robert oversees the sewer lining program. Um, so that is something that we're transitioning to our storm and sanitary sewer engineer. Um, so to take some, some of the stuff off of the, off of his plate, we've hired a stormwater project manager to oversee the six priority projects. Um, in addition to that, we're looking at some, uh, some, I hate to use the word reorganization because it makes it sound like this, it's, it's a big thing. But some, some restructuring of the, the street crews and the storm and sanitary crews, um, and better defining roles and responsibilities so that, uh, Robert doesn't have 15 people reporting to him. And he's, or I guess Robert's replace, replacement doesn't have 15 people reporting to him. Um, and that, that's all being worked out in some of the pay studies and stuff that I've worked through with Wyatt and Steve. Um, it's gone well so far. Uh, we still have part of ways to go, but, um, it's, it's, it's made some movement in the last month and a half, two months.
Good. I think that's going to be a, a big issue, not a, a big thing in the city as we go forward, just that who do you call? How do you figure all this out with a, a different person in there? And that's a big responsibility for you to find the right people and plug them all into the right spots. I think a lot of the other, uh, Public Works employees too have been there for 30 years. And-
Yes, yes.
So that, that will also be a change for you as you, as you restructure, move things around, do things differently. Um, that'll be another challenge as well. So, uh, if there are things that City Council can do as you're going forward in that process, uh, budget wise or other, please continue to share them with us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, let me just ask, is that the end of your questions, Vice Mayor? All right. Let me ask the city attorney, do, uh, several of us need to read our budget disclosures? Should we have done that today? If you're on the phone, Ms. McCroskey?
I am here. And no, they don't, um, need to be read since there will be no, uh, transaction tonight.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
That's why they were not sent to you.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an oversight. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Um, yes, I, I also had succession planning with Robert leaving Zach as kind of an item. And to the extent that we can help support you on that, let us know. Those are going to be some big shoes to fill for the city. Um, I want us to go back to around pay scales and equity concerns you raised. Uh, and maybe this is a concern, uh, question for Wyatt. So when we talk about pay and HR, uh, what did we, where did we end up with hazard pay across our frontline employees? Did we end up, you know, issue hazard pay to both police and DPW or any other frontline workers we had?
Uh, DPW is not included in that hazard pay from the COVID relief money.
And is that still something that we can do?
I will have to defer to Cindy or Wyatt on that.
And I just got off of mute and I think Mr. Shields is just coming right now back to his desk.
Yeah, he was just giving me materials.
With the CARES money, um, it was very restricted to, um, hazard pay for public safety, public health, and human services. We did use, um, some local funding to make sure we could do some bonuses to all employees that had been impacted. And I'll defer to Karen or Wyatt for any further details on what we've done, um, on, in December, using CARES money. With the new ARPA money, one of the eligible resources is supplemental pay increase for sessional workers. So you can't do bonuses or hazard pay, but we can supplement the hourly rate up to $13 per hour. What we were doing with the police was, uh, around $2 an hour. So that's a, a model that we could, um, look at. What's not clear yet is the definition of essential workers. And so, other than it says the chief executive administrator makes that determination based on policies, we need to deter, confirm for the U.S. Treasury, is that our city manager? Or is that the governor because we're not entitled and our money passes through the state? So it is broader, but we don't have a definition yet. What we also don't know yet is if as of March 12th, 2021 forward, or can we do it retro? Will be a broader definition to recoup some of the local funding.
Got it. And so when we get the definition, I guess I would like us to think about, you know, all the jobs across City Hall, DPW included, where people couldn't socially distance or do from home. Um, because I do consider DPW workers, especially knowing that all of operations had to quarantine due to a COVID outbreak not too many months ago. And so that's personally important to me and has been something that I spoke up about since last year. So I would like to see hazard pay, whether we call it some other form or not, be taken care of. Uh, second question I had is around recycling. And so similar to Phil, it was concerning that we have to pay so much for recycling now. Is there an option where we can expand our, um, composting program to help reduce the amount of solid waste we have? Would that help bring down our costs? Because I know that, at least the composting program seems pretty popular among residents. I wonder if that would help.
Uh, yeah, that's a good question. I'm not 100% certain. I know there's about 500 residents that take advantage of, uh, the curbside. And then we have one composting facility up behind the community center. I, I, I'll be honest, I, I don't know if there's an opportunity to expand that or, or, or what to do to try and reduce. Uh, I will say that would be more solid waste oriented than recycling oriented. So I don't know if it would bring the cost of the recycling center itself down.
If it brings down kind of our solid waste down, that might, at least, in the end, we're still doing good.
Yeah, it, it's hard to say how much it'll bring our solid waste down. Um, already, our ADS contract, um, who's our vendor for curbside, uh, bills, they, they bill a fixed amount per house. Um, so we would only save on the tipping fees at the landfill down, uh, Fairfax County. I think Lord and Area is where they take it to. Um, and that is, it's not as much as I expected. I'm not going to start rattling off numbers because I can't remember off the top of my head. But I, I don't know how, how significantly, um, how, how significant of an impact we would have on that.
Okay. So not necessarily a big cost savings, but maybe just good for the environment in general.
Correct.
Great. Um, on the sidewalk program, um, I know that we're looking to start that this year. So about a year or two ago, we talked about some sort of missing links map across the city to understand where we had the biggest sidewalk gaps and that would help prioritize. Uh, where are we with that? And is that something that we'll expect to see as a deliverable in FY22?
Yes, that should be a deliverable in FY22. Um, so we had an intern, uh, with us who made, uh, really good strides on it. He unfortunately left us at the end of the calendar year to, uh, go to school in Minnesota. So he's, he's no longer with us, but, um, we've got a lot of the GIS data. We just haven't had the, uh, the, the staff resources to kind of process that and inform something out of that. Um, I am pleased to tell Council tonight that we do have a transportation engineer. Um, we, we filled that vacancy and we have somebody who's accepted the offer. Um, so we're hoping to get them started, uh, late this month or early May. So that, that, that's what'll really kickstart that and not kind of get that ball rolling again.
That's terrific, because I know we've been talking about wanting to do sidewalks for a long time. So thank you. Between that and hopefully some sort of bottoms up resident request process, kind of like traffic calming, we can at least figure out where we can tackle the first stretch of sidewalk. So that's great. Um, and then a more general question is, we've been building lots of new stuff across the city. And I think when I read through the budget book, that was very indicative, given the number of both, um, CIP projects you guys have taken on, new stretches of sidewalks, intersections, bus shelters, et cetera, bike racks, lots of new stuff. Um, do we have enough money in the budget to maintain all that new stuff?
As long as it remains new, yes. Um, and I, I mean that in the sense that our, our, our new stuff we're putting in is being put into better standards than what, what it was 10, 15, 20 plus years ago. Um, so for, for example, our streetscape with our pavers, um, a, a significant amount of it has some kind of concrete base under it, which prevents any settlement issues. Uh, we have some good tree pit standards, which prevents some, some roots from, from causing some heaving. Um, so as long as we continue to build to those kind of standards, uh, maintenance costs should not get out of hand. My bigger concern is the aging stuff from 20, 30 ish years ago, that is all coming due. Um, and it's starting to reach the end of its expected, uh, life. Um, I'm not quite sure how that's going to sort out. Um, I know there's one neighborhood in town where we have brick paver sidewalks and they're just put on, uh, a small sand layer on dirt with trees close by and no tree pits. Uh, we've been in there probably four or five of the last six or so years. Um, I think this year we're expending about $70,000 to do one side of one street. Um, in comparison, our concrete sidewalk grinding operation, uh, we did in like a neighborhood, a neighborhood and a half, um, for about $50,000. So the not building to good standards and having that infrastructure age out is what's going to cost us. And unfortunately, I don't know if we're going to know that until that starts to age out.
Got it. Well, it's good to know that we're not creating the problem going forward, that we're building good standards now for all the new things. Thank you. That's it for now for Public Works.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, budget related, before we wrap up this segment of our work session? All right.
General budget questions that weren't Public Works, if I can ask them now.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do those, then we're going to move on to the 10 acres. Go ahead.
Wyatt, when we talk about the various buckets of money, the ARPA, the infrastructure bill and other things, um, I've asked this before, but can we include the VC discussion on Founder's Row? What the plan is with the VC money coming this summer?
Yes, and, and so currently, you know, the, what the plan is, is to put it into those capital reserves and to use it for, uh, debt service for the high school. That is the current plan.
That's just for the school portion, but for the other portions, do we have plans for them?
Well, the library's already been spent and so there's, I think there is a little bit of Wrexon Parks money. So let me get, I'll get that number.
Okay. And then for the paying down debt, is it paying down debt or paying down debt service, you said?
Yeah, paying down, uh, helping to cover debt service.
And is that already accounted for in this budget, or is it?
That, that's where it is being, uh, yes, it is, that is an appropriation to capital reserves that's in this budget.
Okay. Um, and then my second question is, um, I saw that in the first Q and A, starting line 169, I had asked to provide a list of kind of what the unfunded needs are. Wyatt, if you could, I guess, take a stab at prioritizing everything in there? Because I think what's hard for us as councils, we're going to continue hearing, you know, department directors say they have various needs. And then, uh, I think having you provide some sort of first cut of, here's how you would roughly prioritize, but at least, uh, help us, especially as we get more clarity on ARPA, um, where we might fund things below the line if possible, or reduce the tax rate.
Okay. I, I will do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Esther?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to note for the Founder's Row VC, um, the 150,000 that is for Wrexon Park is, uh, programmed in the CIP for FY24 for Park Master Plan.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other general, um, questions, uh, budget questions or comments? All right. Let's move on then to the next item, the West Falls Church, uh, Plan, particularly as relates to transportation and urban design. Mr. Shields?
Uh, thank you, Council. And, uh, we've budgeted an hour for this discussion and we'll have another one again on the 12th. And the focus tonight is on transportation, uh, on, um, urban design and on environmental features. And I'll turn it over to Carly to introduce these items. We also have our development team on the call to walk through some of the key features in these areas. And one thing I will just say by way of introduction, a lot of these discussions with the, with the council is to report to you the many hours of staff work on these items and the many hours that your boards and commissions have weighed in on these items and to report to you basically how they've been resolved and to, uh, sort of get a, a confirmation that we can check these off the list. That is the, the, the great majority of the items that we'll be discussing. And there are, however, some where there's still some gray area or some negotiation still happening and we'll certainly highlight those so the council can weigh in on those. Ms. Aubrey, if you could take it away. Thank you so much for all of your good work on this.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Shields. So as was mentioned, this work session is the first of three scheduled work sessions. And the focus tonight is on transportation, urban design, and environment. April 12th will focus on affordable dwelling units, voluntary concessions, and fiscal impact. And then May 3rd will be a follow up on- And then May 3rd will be a follow-up on items raised in these two work sessions. And a public hearing for final council action is tentatively scheduled for May 24th, 2021. So just brief background, on July 8th, the City Council approved the special exception entitlement for the West Falls Church project. And on June 10th, first submission materials were received for an application to amend the special exception entitlement and as well as an application for a special exception site plan for Phase One. This, these applications were referred out to or by council to the boards and commissions in July of last year. And comments were received and discussed at a September work session. And the applicant submitted second submissions of the applications in January. And the City Council work session was held on March 1st to discuss the second submission application materials. So the report includes the topics that are being discussed tonight and kind of broken out into subtopics. And there's attachments that are referred to for each of these items. And those attachments are relevant plan sheets from the application materials. This section also includes some key staff comments that are still outstanding for staff. And all of the staff comments are included in attachment two. And I'll go through those, through those key comments very quickly. For transportation, there's still kind of questions and assurances needed on the issue of around management of delivery trucks and car share drop-off, food delivery, those type of items and how those would function and circulate throughout the site. In terms of urban design, staff does have some comments on architecture and that can be found on attachment two on pages six through nine under the Architecture and Urban Design heading. In terms of streetscape, staff is requesting justification for places where the streetscape that's proposed is not consistent with the streetscape standards. We have talked about this with the development team and understand where they are coming from and where they ask, why they ask or requested. We just want to have something more, you know, in writing. And then under environment, there's comments about the preliminary lead scorecards and if there's opportunities to enhance upon the hotel and office scores and the area of energy and atmosphere. So in terms of timing, we're at the April 5th work session. There's an EDA meeting tomorrow night, planning commission recommendation Wednesday night. And then another town hall on April 14th at noon. And then I mentioned the other city council work sessions. So before I turn it over to FCGP, I did also want to mention that attachment three includes all the boards and commission comments and also the development team's response to those. And for tonight's meeting, they have been color coded for the three topic areas that are discussed tonight. And so I believe Robin Betterall with FCGP will walk through that a little bit. And then other members of the development team are here to kind of cover the other disciplines, the topics tonight, and they will have attachments to show to walk through with those. And then after that, we can take questions. So at this point, unless there's questions for me, I'll turn it over to Robin.
All right, why don't you go ahead and do that and we'll ask questions when we're done with their presentation.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. So thank you, Carly. We are really here tonight mostly to hear questions from council. We have some presentation somewhat prepared, Carly. I wasn't sure actually if you, we were going to go kind of through each attachment one by one, or if you wanted us to go to our presentation. We were sort of prepared to talk about each attachment. We have our consultant team with us tonight and we're really here to answer questions since everyone has sort of seen the project already. We mostly wanted to just field questions from council and hopefully address those questions as they come up.
So I tell you, since we see this infrequently, we've all seen it numerous times, but not numerous times recently. Maybe you could just quickly go through your presentation to just get us familiar with what we're talking about. It's kind of hard on a series of comments and the like to fully grasp what you're contemplating. Could you go through your presentation very quickly?
Sure. So Celeste, did you want to go ahead and bring up the first, I guess, attachment four? And we can have Antoinette Isherwood from Walter Phillips Civil Engineering walk through that first attachment.
Okay, and Robin, this is Cindy and I have the documents, I think, all up, but just direct me to where you want to go.
Okay, it's the crosswalks and street cross-sections.
Yes. Hi, this is Antoinette Isherwood with Walter Phillips. And I apologize, I, my camera is not working on my laptop that I'm using. So I can't be on the screen, but hopefully everyone can hear me okay. So Cindy, if we want to start with the attachment four?
Yep, it's just hanging up on me, hold on.
Okay. And so I think generally, you know, in the interest of time, the sections themselves haven't changed very much. You know, the sidewalk clear widths do range throughout the different streets from a minimum of five feet where we do have areas that aren't intended to be traveled by pedestrians frequently, such as, you know, the lane three area. And then also they range from the minimum five foot to 10 feet. And then out in Leesburg Pike, where we're proposing a shared use path, it is a 12-foot width sidewalk and also along the Mustang Alley shared use path in the rear. Okay, I can see the plans up now. And I was, was just going to kind of just go through these briefly. Here, this is the block A plan, which you'll see the intersection of Leesburg Pike and Haycock Road. All of, you can see pretty clearly our markings of the proposed crosswalks. This is something that carries throughout the site, making improvements to all of the crosswalks at the intersections. And if you could go to the next page, please.
Before you leave that slide, if we could just, just quickly, I've got a question or two. So the crosswalk, is it, is it like thermoplasty? Is it raised? What's the condition? Does it have pet heads? Tell us a little bit more about that intersection, if you could.
Sure, so the Leesburg and Hickock Road intersection, we are proposing the city's brick sidewalks. This intersection is partially and or fully maintained by VDOT. So they are going to also need to review and approve the use of the brick sidewalk. So they may request that they're just striped, the latter striping, which is, which you'll see as we go further west on Leesburg Pike at the Chestnut intersection. They are not proposed to be raised crosswalks. At Leesburg Pike and Haycock are pretty heavily traveled in both directions. And they are both the, of the intersections that you see here with Street C and Leesburg Pike off of Haycock Road are going to be signalized.
Okay, so by signalized, you mean like pet heads, you know, cross now, countdown, that sort of thing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And on the Route 7 streetscape, so what's the face of building to back a curb there?
So it varies. Some of it is wider than others, but we are proposing the minimum 20 feet, 20-foot setback. And in most cases, it is wider. So along Leesburg Pike, we're holding a minimum 12-foot clear sidewalk along our front edges.
And when you say shared, what do you mean by that? Is it concrete or what, what is, is it bike and pedestrian? What do you mean by shared?
Sorry, by shared, I do mean bike and pedestrian.
And is it concrete or is, what are you proposing there?
It is currently meeting the city standard brick sidewalk.
So a brick, a true brick sidewalk and then tree pits and the like as well?
Yes.
And street lights also? Great. That sounds good to me. Are the tree pits then there along the street itself, is that right? Up against the edge of back a curb?
Yes.
And are they four foot, five foot by what?
They meet the standard section. They are five feet inside width. And then we are proposing double planters along the streetscape here.
Okay, and are you proposing like shrubs as well or just trees?
Yes, there are going to be plantings in the planters as well as the trees.
And will the developer be maintaining those?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, I think that'd be at least my expectation. I think it's probably in everyone's best interest to do that. That's all I've got, that's the only questions I have. And Haycock, maybe you could just quickly take us on that. What's the back a curb to face a building?
So I think Carly had mentioned this briefly in the staff report. So along block A here, we are holding a 20-foot setback and a 10-foot minimum clear sidewalk. It's not shown on this page, it's on one of the later pages. But we do have a minimum nine-foot clear sidewalk on Haycock. As you get in front of block D, you'll kind of see that Haycock kind of angles in towards the site. And so as part of this latest iteration of the plan, we did have to add a travel lane to mitigate future impacts to traffic along Haycock Road. And so we did have to add a travel lane, which impacted how far the curb went into the site, which resulted in having to push back in, on the setbacks, since they are based on the face of curb. And so we're having to, we are providing a minimum nine-foot clear along block D.
Nine-foot clear with a five-foot tree pit?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions about this portion of the streetscape? Are there any areas for outdoor seating? Or is it outdoor seating just going to kind of eat into your sidewalk? In other words, are there any planned areas for outdoor dining and the like?
There are. So it's, you know, a lot of it is also focused, there are some slope issues along Leesburg Pike as you're walking up that hill coming from, coming from the city. So as you continue west, there is a lot of grade elevation difference as you approach commons. So we are not proposing any outdoor dining in that area. But as you enter the commons, there are, you know, potential spaces for outdoor dining. We have a 15-foot clear sidewalk there. And so, and we are going to be able to hold a minimum 10-foot clear sidewalk and also have some opportunity for outdoor dining.
Okay. Other questions on this section? Why don't you proceed then?
Okay. Thank you. So Cindy, if we go to the next page. So this continues onto block B. So this is to the west of the area that we were just looking at. You'll see the school parking lot is adjacent to our site along this parcel. And then the, sorry, along the B front, block B frontage, again, you know, we're holding that same 10, 12-foot clear sidewalk. And then along the school parking lot frontage, we're holding a 10-foot clear sidewalk. So there is a grade elevation difference between the sidewalk and the parking lot. So we don't, we're utilizing that additional two feet to make up that grade. And you'll see at the Chestnut Street intersection with Route 7, again, we're making signalized improvements and also adding crosswalks on all four legs of that intersection. And you'll see those are the kind of striped crosswalk there that we were talking about because this is in the portion that is maintained by VDOT.
And it looks like there's a bump out in the bottom right there. Is that, is I'm looking at that correctly?
In the bottom right of, yeah.
Up one at the top, other side of the crosswalk, there you go.
Yes. So that's to help shorten the crossing.
What happens after that? Is it a decel lane or is that, what is that afterwards?
It is, so, yes, so that's going to be a turn lane that goes into lane three and into Mustang Alley.
Got it. And in terms of a shared sidewalk, how does that work? I mean, is it basically, when you call it shared, it's just people riding their bicycle on the sidewalk? Is that what it is or is there anything more to it than that?
No, that's pretty much what we're intending here.
Okay. Otherwise, to do a bike lane, that would require five more feet, essentially pushing the building back five more feet, correct?
Yes, and it goes into kind of the use and, you know, we've gone back and forth also on how we wanted to do it on Mustang Alley as well and having, you know, the same level pedestrian path and bicycle path and, you know, whether or not you, you want to create separation and just trying to figure out how that would work best to create some designated paths.
Got it. I imagine we'll get there, but I would say this isn't your normal, you know, bike area. You've got tons of kids coming up here and we're going to make absolutely sure there's a safe way for everybody, for bikers, pedestrians, everyone, to get up here without, you know, coming into harms way. And you've got middle schoolers as well who are younger, less experienced. So I think that's something to give some extra consideration. We may get to that in a minute, but irrespective of that, I would just say, I think a lot of care needs to go into the planning of getting folks here by bicycle.
Yes, absolutely. And, and you know, our thought on that is that a lot of the students are going to be turning on Haycock and/or coming from the north side of Haycock Road. And so they'll be utilizing the path that's designated on Mustang Alley that does have its bike lane in order to get to the, to the bike racks that are located at the high school entrance, just because especially of the steep hill as you're coming up Route 7. The idea, I think, was that most of the students coming through the site and approaching the site wouldn't be utilizing this Route 7 sidewalk specifically for a bike path.
Got it, okay.
And Antoinette, on slide seven of this deck, you do have a profile of that bike up on, of that bike route on Mustang Alley.
Okay, any other questions? Why don't we proceed? Has the school seen this, the school folks? Have they seen this yet?
Yes.
And do they have any comments about access to the school, pedestrian or biker?
No, I mean, we, we meet with them bi-weekly on the kind of campus planning. So they've seen these plans many times, the school actual, you know, staff and school leadership. And we presented to the school board last week.
Okay.
And went through everything with them, so.
Thank you.
They're satisfied at this point.
All right, keep going.
Okay. And then if Cindy, you could please go to the next page. So this gets into the site as you go travel further along. So this is north of the intersection and block that we were just looking at. It goes into block C, Street A. Street A is the connection of the street from the commons that goes to the school. You'll see the drop-off area there in front of the school's plaza space. And then it leads into Mustang Alley. So we are providing crosswalks throughout this street and along the commons to make those pedestrian connections. And also, Street A right now, you know, doesn't go through to Mustang Alley with the school's current plan. But when this street does get developed, it's going to make that connection and then additional crosswalks will be provided.
On that turnaround there, I presume that that will accommodate like truck radiuses or radii or whatever the word is? The turning radii?
For trucks.
Yeah, like in other words, how tight is that? Can a school bus make that turn or is that?
They are, the school buses are not intended to go through that.
They may not be intended, but you could have somebody's sports team or some visitor team or whatever. I'm just, I'm curious, will it accommodate a school bus, whether it's intended or not? Or is it just too tight for a school bus to turn there?
No, I do think it's going to be too tight. So that it was designed mainly for parent drop-off. So for more for personal vehicles and not for bus or truck use.
Okay.
And the idea too is to kind of minimize, to make it, you know, usable, but also minimize the amount of paving that's needed for vehicular traffic.
Okay. All right.
And then if you could go to the next slide, please, Cindy. So this is moving east of the block that we were just looking at. This is the block D that shows the intersection of Mustang Alley with Haycock. And again, we're providing a three-leg crosswalk area that will be signalized at the intersection of Haycock and Mustang Alley. So we're providing these safe crossings for the students that are coming from the east side of the site and walking to the school or biking to the school. And you can see here in the, on the Mustang Alley. And you can see here in the, on the Mustang Alley, there is a shared bicycle path, which is the 12-foot path on the north side there. And again, this runs along Mustang Alley and ends at the point of the school where they'll have a lot of their bike racks.
And is that a hawk, is that a hawk crossing there?
This is currently proposed to be a fully signalized crossing that will have to go through VDOT review and approval.
Okay. Questions for anyone? Is there any on-street or within the project? I'm not seeing a lot of on-street parking, but maybe I just can't discern it. Is there on-street parking within the project other than in the garages?
There is on-street parking along Commons.
Okay, just Commons.
And a few spaces along street A, kind of helping to lead into that drop-off area in case there is a queue as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
The next slide, please.
So these next couple sheets do just go into more detail about the sections. Mayor Charter, do you want me to go into these specific details? I know there's a lot left to present.
Why don't you just, why don't you go roll through them quickly and if there's questions, someone will stop you.
Sure, sure. So this is the common section. As I mentioned, we do have a 15-foot sidewalk that we're proposing. There are going to be tree pits throughout and that 15-foot sidewalk could be decreased to a minimum 10 feet where, you know, we might propose outdoor dining areas along the Commons. Next slide, please. And these are the sections along Leesburg Pike and Haycock Road. And again, I think we talked about the minimum clear widths. We are proposing the standard streetscape that is in the guidance manual. We are proposing raised curves. There are areas where we're, we're proposing two trees versus the one tree that's in the streetscape guidance just because of the more heavily used vehicular roads that these streetscapes are adjacent to. And so we've had the discussion with staff as well, and that was something that I do believe they are comfortable with. Next slide, please. This here is the Mustang Alley section. So as I mentioned, we have a 12-foot shared use path here as well. And this is really the path that we're imagining that the students will be using for bicycles as well as pedestrians as they approach the high school entrance. It is going to be the closest point for them to get to the high school entrance. Next slide.
They'd use the sidewalk, basically, the 12-foot sidewalk and their bikes?
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, Wyatt, is it, is it allowed for people to use sidewalks for bicycling, just technically?
Well, I think what we're looking at here is actually, is a, could you describe that path? That sort of the track that is the last, to the north of Mustang Alley?
Yes, so on the north side of Mustang Alley, so what we're currently proposing is the section on the left side. So we are calling it a 12-foot shared use path. You know, and the thought is also that most of the students will be traveling in the same direction. So, you know, that having a five-foot wide area for bicycles and the rest of the width to be used for pedestrians would be sufficient with for people traveling in the same direction. And then on the south side of Mustang Alley, we also have a minimum 10-foot clear sidewalk along the frontage of the commercial parcel that's being developed. Sorry, on the right-hand side, at one point, we had discussed this alternate section for Mustang Alley. And this was to have a bike path along the vehicular road, next to the vehicular roadway. And it was decided that we would, that the raised bike path was going to be more preferable to keep the cyclists off of the, being the same elevation as the travelway.
So Ms. Hardy's got a question. Letty?
I did. There's currently a big hill along that property. Is this before you get to the hill or where exactly it, does the hill go away?
Yes, well, the shared use, the hill's going to remain on the Virginia Tech side. But the, the trail will not, there, there is going to be some space between the trail and the edge of the property. So the path will not be on the hill.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, keep going.
Okay. So our next sections here are street A and street B. You'll see in the little diagram in the center there where these are located. And so on street A, you'll see we are providing a six-foot clear sidewalk on the south side and an eight-foot clear sidewalk on the north side. And the idea there is that there is going to be more retail use along the north side of street A. And that is the portion that kind of connects and ties into the sidewalk that goes directly to the school. And so with the, with the street section that we had, that's, that's how we ended up with the six and the eight-foot clear sidewalks. And along street B, this is a larger connection between Haycock Road and the garage to the center area. And so we are providing a minimum 10-foot clear sidewalk along the street B section.
Is your, your street tie-in with Virginia Tech, is that everyone's on board and okay with that?
Uh, what do you mean?
Well, in other words, the road is going to punch through to Metro eventually, right?
Yes, that is the goal.
And so where you guys proposed that the road end on your property and continue on to there, is there okay with that location?
Yes, everyone is aware of where we're showing the connection.
When you say aware, but I mean, have they sort of officially said, that's great, it works for us? Or is there any concern at all that they, they're not fully on board? I mean, I guess I just want to make sure that we don't design a road that a year from now, somebody says that won't accommodate the depth of the building we want to do here or there. They're, they're on board, not just aware of it, but has anyone sort of confirmed that they're okay with it?
There's been discussions. Yeah.
Yeah, there have been discussions and I think with the hit negotiations not proceeding, you know, it was going to be a kind of a clean slate, which you could design around. And the two, the two teams were designing together in a very coordinated fashion. Now, the main interest is to make sure that the new road fits without interfering with the existing building. And it, we've not received a formal letter from Virginia Tech that it is okay. And I think it's probably a good idea to have that formal discussion. But looking at it, it looks like it is not in conflict with the existing building.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, since we're on the subject of that main road, two concerns, you heard the one concern about it not serving vehicular traffic. How about the other concern that it doesn't become just a major cut-through? And that the pretty pictures really are just that. And that in reality, it's not going to be all that active because it's become a successful cut-through street. So tell me a little bit more about how we're going to prevent that from happening.
Maria, are you on the line? Do you want to try to take that one?
Absolutely. Good evening. This is Maria Lashinger with Grove Slade Associates, we're the transportation consultants. So it's absolutely a fine balance between needing to serve the site for that traffic that's coming off of Route 7 that's either destined for the site or ultimately up to the metro to go up and park. All the while, making sure that we are serving those pads that we're serving the bicyclists who will be on the bike lanes on all along Commons, again, destined for the metro. You know, so it's, it's the narrow lanes. We're going to slow traffic. It'll make it less attractive for the cut-through and more attractive for those folks who are destined for the immediate site or just beyond. You know, with pedestrian bumpouts and kind of all that activity is going to be occurring because that's, that's where it's located. It's not going to be particularly attractive for tons of cut-through traffic. It's not necessarily, you know, it is a parallel route to Haycock. But it's not going to, you're not going to choose the Commons over Haycock if ultimately you're destined to the north beyond the metro.
Right, so it is a fine balance. You're absolutely right. And the one concern is the traffic concern. And the other concern is, are we doing something with the traffic that will make it unattractive to develop the kind of activity that I think we're all hoping for? You don't need to answer that today, but if you can follow up with some additional observation about that, including case studies and other things, so that, yes, we need to serve the cars, particularly those that are using the facilities in the site. But while we want to provide a theoretical connection to the metro, we don't want it to substitute for Haycock Road. You see what I mean?
Understood. We can absolutely follow up with some more information for you.
Thanks.
All right, please proceed.
Okay, if you go to the next slide, please.
Right now I have eight of eight. I'm on the last slide.
Oh. Sorry, okay. Those are all the street sections.
The next one you might be going to is site circulation, traffic signals and bike share, which is attachment five.
Yes.
That I can do.
Excellent. I'll take this one again. Maria Lashinger with Grove Slade. I think there's, there's four, I believe there's four pages here. I think we can just talk from this first one. That'll be the easiest. It does cover kind of all the modalities that we're discussing tonight. First of all, we did prepare a number of transportation-related submissions for the application. The first of which was the traffic impact study that was ultimately approved by both VDOT and the city. On this graphic here, you can see that the vehicular access remains the same as what was presented previously in that we have two full movement signalized entrances on Haycock Road. We have a full movement signalized entrance on Leesburg Pike as well as a right-in, right-out and a right-out only on Leesburg Pike. Bicycle access, the primary north-south route we just discussed is along the Commons. And the primary east-west is via Mustang Alley on that north side there. This graphic also shows a potential bike share location up on the north side. That is the potential location at this point in time. That exact location is actually under study and we'll report back with those findings, I believe, at a later date. As it relates to the new traffic signals, we prepared signal warrant studies for the two new signals on Haycock Road. Both of those have been approved by the city. And actually, both of those traffic signals fall within the boundaries of the city. Therefore, the design approval process actually lies with city staff. Though we will coordinate the traffic signal timings of both of those signals with VDOT in that the Route 7 and Haycock existing signal is kind of the master signal, if you will, that we will tie in the two new signals in the city from. We also prepared a signal justification report for the new signal down on Route 7 at the Commons. That too was approved by VDOT at the end of the day. So we're going through the, the design process, trying to figure out what that ultimately looks like. And on this graphic, last, definitely not least, in green, kind of highlighted throughout, you'll see the pedestrian routes all through the site, also connecting externally across Haycock Road and across Leesburg Pike at both of those new traffic signals. And that's the high-level summary of all those kind of four graphics, which vary slightly from one to one.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions, comments on what we're seeing right now? I guess I would say having the bike share station kind of buried up in the back doesn't appeal to me. It seems like it's not visible and everyone sort of has to go to the very end, edge of the project to either see it or to drop off your bike or pick up a bike. To my mind, this ought to be kind of a central amenity to get people to get out of their cars and the like. And so I would suggest something much more visible and much more closer to the entrance and even possibly to bike shares. But I think it definitely, where it's at right now, it's just sort of, it feels like an afterthought. And so I would suggest, again, more central location. I mean, also, I know it may not be possible, given the widths of things here. I think it'd be very nice to have just even a touch of dedicated bike lanes in this project somewhere or the other. And again, it may be that that's just a bridge too far. But it occurs to me as well that that would strongly encourage bike ridership to have some true safe havens of where you can ride. Any other thoughts on this slide from anyone? All right, why don't you proceed with what you got next?
Excellent. With that, we can move on to attachment number six, which is the TDM Plan, PMP. Great, thank you. So kind of the highlights here, right, the TDM Plan puts four strategies so we can decrease the reliance on single occupant vehicles. The, what's on the screen right this second is the updated draft. It was updated to address staff's comments. And now includes a more robust monitoring and enforcement section as well as an outline of parking management strategies where we discuss the need for shared and unbundled parking as well as managing truck access through the site. This one's 14 pages. I don't think we need to go through each one. Those are the highlights from the previous version that was discussed here.
Got it. Any, any questions, comments? And I would note, if this were Arlington, for example, you'd be buying Metro fare cards for your residents and the like, which I don't see here and I understand. But I just would note that we're probably a lot lighter than other communities are. To my mind, having a second bike share station would, would be something to consider as I just mentioned. Any, anything else, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, just to emphasize again the importance of planning, the possibility of Route 7 light rail or bus rapid transit. And is that sufficiently planned in and potentially funded? Should that project be incorporated as it might under the federal funding programs that are at least being.
Absolutely. So the, the light rails or bus rapid transit has absolutely been planned for and is, you know, discussed throughout the transportation studies that we've done to date. And the plan, I believe, is still, is leaving room for the potential for a station in front of the site. And so that's been baked into the design thus far.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy, then, Mr. Duncan? Letty, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Now, yes.
Sorry, I'm having trouble unmuting. I had questions around parking and around smart parking in particular. I know the city is getting grant money to work on just smart city technology in general. How does the timeline of that sync up with what we're envisioning in the TDM Plan and the parking? Maybe a question, Cindy?
Well, the 10 million that we have for smart city is looking good for final approval from the General Assembly. The governor did not amend that section, so then we'd wait for the budget to be effective July 1 and work on an agreement. I think generally from the grant and working with Virginia Tech, it aligns well. I'll defer back to the development team as to whether they accommodated that in their TDM or that will be something that we'd refine and build upon.
I mean, obviously, we didn't know about the, the grant at the time that we were planning this project. So I would not say that necessarily reflected here. But we have been talking to the city about different things. I think one in particular that's appealing to us is parking wayfinding. That was coordinated throughout not only this site, but the tech site and ultimately the Womata site. So that if you're arriving kind of anywhere within, within that area, you'd be sort of directed as to where the available parking was on the site. So that's one thing that we've been talking about. But it is something that we're going to have to continue to work with the city and Fairfax on in the best use of the fund.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great opportunity. I would view it as such. It'll give you a chance to have a cutting-edge transportation project in the city as well. So I think it's a real boon for the city and for you all frankly as well. But I think you should get up to speed, Wyatt. Maybe you can make sure that happens in the very near future so that you all can incorporate that into your next iteration of design for the project.
As it relates to kind of your parking minimums, I assume that you were asking for less parking than whatever the standard ratios are. And so that's where I think that smart technology should be to our advantage, right? If we can help people find spaces easier than you don't need hopefully as many.
We've certainly been coordinating and Mayor and Council will certainly continue to do that and with Virginia Tech's applying for a planning grant. And then we'll plan, you know, the parking connected signalization is a great opportunity to, as you said, pilot this connected infrastructure. connected signalization is a great opportunity to, as you said, pilot this connected infrastructure.
So Cindy, do we think the timing of that money should sync up well with when this project will open? Because I'd hate for us to open without that and then have to go back and retrofit whenever the state money comes through.
This money will be in the FY 22 budget, so I think we can align it with the construction. That's certainly what when Wyatt and I were preliminarily talking about it, it looked well and also talking with the development team. This happens to also be an area with the connected infrastructure that will be a potentially good additional grant opportunity supplement and build on with the new Americans Jobs Plan Infrastructure for Transportation as an example, where we can build on this. Also for our traffic signals, so it connects throughout the rest of the city.
Mr. Duncan?
First discussion earlier.
Ms. Hardy, were you finished or do you have additional questions?
That's it for now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. We, we could use your help, I think, in messaging to the public. Your vision of, you know, the parking demands of the future. I know that we spend a lot of time on every development project, particularly this one, on that topic because we are, as I recall, Evan, you know, a couple of years ago now, indicated that parking for this whole development is going to be reasonably generous because it wants to have a reputation of being a place where, you know, people can come to and find a place to park and get out and walk around. And I thought, okay, well, that makes sense. That's good. I'm not sure how, you know, that is translating into the numbers for which you are actually asking now for the residential and the hotel and the office components. The, you know, received wisdom from planners, of course, is that, you know, you'll, you'll attract as many cars as you build for. And if you don't build so many parking places, you won't get so many cars. And maybe that's true, but there's an element of, of uncertainty about that, that it would be helpful to have words attached to this document that explain how it is that people are going to live in these condominiums and rental apartments and they're either not going to own any car at all, or maybe they're just going to have one. You know, and is there any flex at all? I mean, let's say they don't own a car or they only have one. What if they have an out of town visitor? Where does the visitor park? You know, these are the kind of nuts and bolts, nitty gritty questions that we get from the community anytime we do a development. And I think, you know, having some pressure release valve for parking at least for the next, I don't know, pick a number, 10 years. People are still going to be driving around in cars for 10 years. After that, who knows? Would be helpful as we try to sell this to the community.
We can certainly help with talking points on that. I think the work we've done so far, we had a fairly detailed shared use parking study done internally to help us figure out what the right ratios are. So this project is definitely on the cutting edge as far as allowing the fact that there's all these different uses to allow us to reduce the overall parking. Where we were conservative on parking was a little bit on the retail side to make sure we weren't building something that became a nuisance where people didn't want to come shop in the stores because they couldn't, they perceived they couldn't find parking. And a little bit on the office, because we want, we want to make sure it's marketable. On the residential uses, we really, you know, we are right where you want to be from a demand perspective. And then we have the ability for overflow parking into the commercial uses if there ends up being more demand. But we wouldn't expect there to necessarily be. And then there's a second phase. So to the extent we've proven out in the first phase how the parking is going to live, we have the ability in the second phase to be even more aggressive.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, other, this is your TDM. So might I just suggest this? It is getting late. I think we should go to the environmental aspects net next. And if it turns out we can't get to or through urban design, we'll put that on to one of our later meetings. But we do have the Atlantic proposal tonight and several other items and it's pulling on 10 o'clock. So unless anyone objects, I would suggest, again, we go to environmental next. Urban design is complicated and we may all want our wits about us. And I might suggest if, depending on when environmental ends, that we go ahead and push that off the urban design to a later meeting and then just continue on with the numerous other items on our agenda. All right, I'm going to go ahead and take that as maybe a yes from folks. Can you all go to environment now or staff going to give a presentation on that?
It's attachments 11 and 12. I'm not sure who from the development team was speaking on those two attachments, but I think 11 is the lead.
We have our lead consultant from Sustainable Building Partners here. And then Walter Phillips was going to speak to the stormwater management program.
All right.
Sure. Hi, this is Jen Wolf with Sustainable Building Partners. The attachments here, we'll just give you an update as to where we are relative to the lead progress and what we're tracking for the development. The project as a whole is pursuing, you know, LEED ND certification at the gold level. And our scorecard shows 62 points for gold. Similarly, the individual blocks within development are achieving LEED certification, all at the gold level except for the hotel, which is at the silver, silver level. Sustainable Building Partners is working on all of the projects, all of the buildings and the whole development, facilitating the LEED certification. Next slide.
Before you move on from that, could you explain why the hotels, it looks like it's silver or is it just certified silver? Yeah, so what's, what's the deal with that versus the gold for all the other buildings?
Um.
That was the standard that was put out in the RFP. And so that's the standard that we've committed to.
Okay. All right, and so I guess that's something to, for all of us to mull over. Was that in the earlier agreement? I don't recall. That is the hotel.
Yeah, it is. It was part of the original agreement. And I know we had, you know, the development team had kind of worked through that. Too for the hotel brands too, just to some of their standards. And to be able to attract some hotel brands, that's also why the silver level tends.
Yeah, I'll add to that too. It's, it's, it's not necessarily that it was, I don't quite frankly recall the RFQ at all. But as part of the CA negotiation, we committed to a specific level of LEED for each building. And so we're meeting that for every building. For the hotel, we did commit to silver. And it's largely based on, if I believe correctly, if I remember correctly, based on the HVAC systems that the various brands require. And the fact that each room has to have their own individual unit. And they don't have fresh air. They don't typically allow you to open the windows, which is another big knock from a LEED perspective. So it's fairly difficult to get a hotel above silver. And so that's why we've always, always maintained that the hotel is going to be silver, but we were doing excellent stuff on all the other buildings.
Got it. I guess I'll channel my colleague Danzy and just say it really stands out to have gold, gold, gold and silver. And so if there's any ways you go forward that you might be able to consider doing gold for that, I think many of us would appreciate it.
And we're working with the project teams right now, going through the design development process and finding opportunities. You know, really work on efficiency and whatnot through the LEED scorecards.
Got it. All right, why don't we go to the next slide?
Sure. Just some quick highlights relative, you know, sustainable site elements. A lot of this is pulled from the LEED ND scorecard as well. It aligns with the individual building scorecards. Tree lined streets, we're targeting that credit under LEED ND. So trees are located every 50 feet or less for at least 60% of the blocks. That's just the ND requirement. And the design team can speak to the specifics on what the actual spacing is. But we are meeting the ND requirement. For rainwater management, we're maximizing low impact development strategies. I know Antonet will expand here on the full stormwater management strategy. For Heat Island, we are targeting that credit as well at the building level. So we are looking at a combination of high SRI roofs, green roofs, and really focusing on some of those lighter colored pavers or paving where it makes sense. Next slide. For, go down one, EV charging. So the project is committing to installing EV charging spaces with stations for 11 of those spaces. And they're also installing EV ready spaces, which would be 30 spaces. The development.
Question here?
Yes, sure.
So 11 out of, what's the total? So I think just hard for me to know, is 11 a lot or not a lot?
That was my question too, as a percentage of overall parking spots, what is that?
I'm going to pull up mine.
You don't have to have it now, but I think part of it is also just knowing, well, what is a good ratio? And maybe that's a question for staff. For us to evaluate this and if this is something that was committed again in the CA or up for negotiation now.
So this is something that we committed to as part of the early process. So, but, you know, the, the project teams continue to explore additional mechanisms to increase capacity, understanding, you know, the need for EV charging spaces. This is something that, you know, we've committed to now and will continue to carry those conversations forward to find ways.
Stop this down as something that we need to keep an eye on. If that's something we should ask for more of.
Yeah, I think the marketplace is going to tell you that 11 park charging stations, there's way too few. My guess is by the time this thing's built, it's going to be dramatically less than you need. But in some ways, I guess that's a market decision of your own. But my hunch is there's going to be a lot more electric cars in the next five years than we think there are, than we thought there were a few years ago.
Sure.
And the new legislation passed at the state level that's going to provide Virginia more opportunity to be the first to buy those electric vehicles. So that'll have impact too. ESE was talking about this this past week. I mean, I'm sure they'll be willing to comment too going forward.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address this too, because we've had this conversation a number of times at the planning commission and at the council on, on EV parking. And if you look at other mixed use projects that are good examples, Pike and Rose is a great one. The Wharf is another, Sherrlington. The infrastructure to add additional EV spaces is fairly easy after the fact. The hard thing is to put them in specific places that they aren't necessarily needed. And you'd rather know where the demand is going to be based upon the actual market demand. A lot of the EV companies will actually pay for the infrastructure. And so what typically happens is in an apartment building, for example, if we have more than 10 spaces of demand, which I think you're right, we might, that apartment dweller will pay 50 bucks a month or something for an EV space. And the company will actually put in the infrastructure and then collect revenue from the use of that station. Same with office users. So I 100% agree with you that there will ultimately be more. What I think is wasteful and what most mixed use property owners have agreed is to put them in and kind of predetermine where they're going to be. When you really don't know where the demand's going to be or how the demand's going to work or what it's going to be or what system you're going to want to use, or are they going to be a Tesla, are they going to be a different type of car user? It's better to just be flexible and the market demand is growing. So the market, the market dynamics are actually working quite well in this regard. It's not something that really needs to be regulated. But we did agree to a certain number of minimum to satisfy the requirements and make sure folks know that we are intending to do it and that there would be a fast charge on site as well. So that's, that's kind of what we've always maintained and that's really the best practice in the industry.
All right, other comments? Why don't you keep going?
Next slide. So just relative to energy use intensity and energy performance. You know, there are goals for EUI for each building. The project team, you know, we, we understand those goals and have had early conversations with all the projects, setting LEED point targets, completing early design conversations and Fox Energy model analyses. We've already started talking about different energy efficiency opportunities with the project teams. So we're really kind of targeting these EUIs, if not better. I know too, just relative to the LEED scorecards and what, what everyone has seen, the points, just keep in mind too, for each different rating system, the percent savings aligns to different points on the scorecard. So points themselves don't necessarily allow you to make an apples to apples comparison between performance. So that the rating systems themselves have different kind of energy, energy cost savings and point tables. Next slide. So that these last couple of slides are just our current LEED scorecards for each project. The first one here is LEED version four for Corin Shell, this is for the office building showing 60 points for gold. It, the next one here is for the hotel B2, that also shows, that shows 52 points for silver. And then the next to the last, this one's building A, which is the rental along Haycock and Leesburg Pike. This shows 60 and a half points for gold. And the last one here is the condo also showing 60 and a half points for gold. So that's our current status too for, for the projects.
All right. Are there questions about what we've heard? Let me ask you about stormwater. Was that intended to be part of the conversation? It didn't seem like we got much on that. Obviously, you guys are detaining whatever occurs on site. Are you doing any more than, than what's, you know, created by your own site? In other words, some sites recently have agreed to sort of overstore and you may not have any. You may be at the crest of a hill, so it doesn't matter. But could you discuss briefly your stormwater program?
Antonet with Walter Phillips. We actually, we're going to run through the stormwater sheets as the next attachment.
Okay, great.
And I can talk about what we're doing for that.
Okay, super.
If we're ready to move on. Okay. Okay, so these next couple of sheets here, and I apologize, these are all the very detailed technical drawings that we have in the SESP set. So I did want to just talk briefly, kind of as an overview. Our, what we're providing in water quantity is reducing the 10 year runoff by 10%. And this was something that was discussed early on during the SCE and is part of the voluntary concession. So that is beyond what is required by the state to do the additional 10% reduction. And then we're also meeting the 20% runoff reduction for the one year runoff from existing conditions. And then for water quality requirements, just generally our design from what we've shared, there were presentations last July, do remain the same. We're providing all of our credits that we need for BMP on site. So we aren't purchasing any offsite credits in order to meet our requirements. We are providing approximately 30%, or meeting approximately 30% of our requirements through bio retention planter treatment. We're meeting about 18% of our requirements through green roof. And then about 2% of it is through perennial pavement. That makes up about 50% of our BMP phosphorus removal requirement. And then the remaining 50% is being met through filtration devices. And these are structures that have filtration devices underground. And then all of it does outfall to these detention structures. So for stormwater detention, we're providing five detention vaults throughout the site. All of the roof areas are going to go to these detention structures. And then there are also going to be some land area at the ground area that's going to be going to, to these detention structures. Per the VCs that were agreed upon during the SCE, we are proposing that 20% of the building roof areas, not the garage structures, but the building roof areas are going to be green roof. And then the buildings that have courtyard amenity spaces, that's where we're proposing a lot of the bio retention planters to treat roof areas from above. And then on the ground level, there is bio retention along Commons Drive. There's one at the, sorry, if you want to go, Cindy, if you could please roll down, there is kind of an overall BMP schematic. And maybe I can just speak to that as a visual. To the next page. Next page. These are all the detention vault sections. The next page, please. And the next page. There is one overall BMP schematic. If you could keep going.
So why are you doing that, Ms. Hardy? Ask a question. Letty?
Thank you. I will admit that all these schematics and stormwater discussion is way over my head. But I had a more general question about how we might be recycling. but I had a more general question about how we might be recycling stormwater, or if at all, recycling stormwater and gray water. And the reason why I ask this is, I think a few years ago, we had actually taken a tour of, it was either Canal Park or Yards Park in the city. And they had done, recycled gray water and stormwater and used it for their irrigation and public restrooms, and I thought that was just, you know, a good way to use water judiciously. Is that something that we are considering here?
So, you know, we have looked into it a bit, and I, I think there's also kind of a scale of the building use. I know is potentially one of the concerns about when to implement those types of systems. So from what I understand of reusing rainwater for plumbing systems, you basically have to have two side-by-side systems that go throughout the building. And so there's a certain scale of when you want to use that type of system. I don't know the specific examples that you mentioned, and the details of how they are able to use that, I think some of it too. So you could potentially reuse rainwater for irrigation. There is kind of a second level to that of how the calculations are kind of done and the credits taken for your stormwater management. You know, the thought is that when you're utilizing rainwater for irrigation, there are going to be times of the year where you can't use it, you know, when, when you're not going to need as much irrigation in the winter times, let's say, or, you know, soon after it rains, you're not going to be utilizing that runoff. And so there's that aspect of what you do with the runoff when you're not able to use it for irrigation and reuse. So in that sense, we'd have to find something to do with the runoff to continue to meet our requirements year-round. And so unfortunately, some of these ideas, also, there's a means, a method of how we're able to meet our requirements technically, and being able to provide our stormwater management on-site throughout the year, and not just sometimes when it can be used, even though it, you know, we want, we would like to use the rainwater for our other things, such as, such as irrigation, and that is what we looked into. I think some of it's just kind of the logistics of implementing that year-round.
So I'm hearing the answer is no, that we are not looking at those-
We are not proposing that currently, no.
Thank you.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Oh, thank you. So here's the BMP schematic overall. As you can see, kind of through the commons, I think this is what I had started speaking to on a ground level, because a lot of what I had mentioned earlier is within the building roof footprint. So on the ground level, as you enter, the commons there is a rain garden, kind of in that center median island. And then as you go through the commons north, there is a series of permeable pavement paths, and there is going to be, we're currently proposing the use of artificial turf, which does meet a permeable pavement section in order to capture runoff underneath that, that artificial turf area. And then as you travel further north, we do have bioretention planters along the east and west streetscape in order to capture the runoff from the street there and treat it. And so, sorry?
I was going to say, proceed.
Okay. And so, so overall, that's kind of the general overview of what we're proposing on the site for meeting our stormwater management and our methods of doing so.
Okay. Any questions about what we just heard? Or about environmental issues?
I had a question about tree canopy. I think I noted in the staff report that we're at like 16 and a half percent. How does that compare to what urban forestry would like to see? It's a question for staff.
Typically, the comments we receive from Urban Forestry Commission seeks 20%. So I mean, we've, we've reached pretty close to that, and I think this is higher than what we have typically seen on other mixed-use projects.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Just large-scale metrics. What level of storm are you prepared, is your site prepared to manage without, without loss? And secondly, what's the level of storm that you're prepared to manage on-site? Is it a 100-year storm, a thousand-year storm, a one-year storm, a 10-year storm?
Yes, we are managing the 10-year storm on-site, and we're proposing to reduce the runoff by 10% from the existing conditions.
Okay. And finally, a question relating to both flooding and other natural catastrophes. What, to what level are you going to be building all of your buildings? Question will require some detailed answer. I'd be interested in knowing what building codes you're going to be using, whether you're going to be using more than the minimum, or just simply the minimum.
I'm sorry, you were breaking up a little bit. Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah. So it relates to the, the structures that you're building and the way that you're building them will meet what building codes, especially with regard to performance against natural catastrophes? Just provide me the answer later, it's getting late, unless you have something that you wanted to say now. But more and more with increased natural catastrophes and increased flooding as a result of climate change, we're going to have to have more sustainable buildings. And I'm trying to figure out how sustainable is this development in the new environment? Literally, the new environment.
Yes, thank you. And I will have to defer to the rest of the team about actual building design for other natural disasters. In terms of stormwater management runoff, you know, our, we always designed to provide an overland relief path for these times when these larger storms do come through. And as we know, the city's storm infrastructure is undersized in a lot of areas, and so, and they're also generally designed to carry a 10-year storm. So the overland relief path is something that we plan for if all of the storm, public storm sewer infrastructure is inundated. And so in terms of building design, you know, the, the goal is to not have the runoff go into the buildings. And so for that type of natural disaster event, we wouldn't, the water would hopefully flow around all of these buildings and not inside of them. And then I'll defer to the rest of the team, which we'll, we'll have to get back to you on for other types of building design for natural disasters.
Okay. One other, one other question again for answering right in later. What happens if you get a 100-year storm? Because that seems to be happening a lot. What happens to the runoff?
Yes, and that's what we've, you know, designed our, our overland, that's what the overland relief paths are designed for. So when the storm inlets can't take in all this runoff, it is going to flow through the streets downstream and continue into the streets. And so that is the current path that we're proposing here as well.
Where does it go after it goes into the street?
So it continues-
Phil's house, that's what I was thinking.
No, no, it's not a silly question, Mr. Mayor. What I'm trying to get to is, have we really designed this site to withstand climate change? Or are we just unfortunately building again to potentially current standards resulting in more pressure on the city's stormwater system? That's the question. And an answer later, more detail would be appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions relating to stormwater or environmental as a whole? So again, given the hour, my suggestion is that we hold off on urban design, which I think will take a considerable amount of time for our next meeting on this project, given that we have several other items as well. I know that probably isn't the ideal circumstance, but I think at a certain point in the evening, it's just too hard to really wrap your, your head around complicated design issues, particularly since we have another project immediately after this. So with your all's approval, I would suggest that we go ahead and put the urban design portion on the next meeting for this item, and continue on, and take a short recess and continue on with our agenda. Does anyone have an objection to that? All right. So my apologies to the developer and to staff as well, but I think just given the hour, I think that's the best course of action. So what I might suggest is we take a short recess, since we've been meeting about two hours and 40 minutes without one, and reconvene at, let's say, 10:17, and move on with the Atlantic, a brief overview of the Atlantic proposal. So again, a recess until 10:17, and thank you to our developer partners for coming out this evening. So we're in recess until 10:17. All right. It is 10:17, and it's time to reconvene. I hope everyone's back from our short break. Mr. Shields, are you ready to move on to the next item, the Atlantic proposal?
Yes, Mayor Tarter and members of council. We do, we're joined tonight by representatives of Atlantic Realty, and Adam Schulman is on this call, and also their land use council, Andrew Painter with Wash Kaluchi is on this call. We will start things off with a staff report, and our staff lead for this project is Akita Ruzi. And so let me turn it over to Akita, and then we'll go through the developers' presentation.
Good evening, Akita Ruzi with Planning. The application before you is for a new mixed-use development proposal at the intersection of West Broad Street and South Maple Avenue. The applicant's team will provide a presentation introducing their project this evening and seek your initial feedback on the first iteration of their proposal. But before I turn it over to them, I'll just provide a very high-level summary of the staff report that's before you. Terms of site, the overall proposed development site entails five parcels, including 150 South Washington Street, 101, 191, and 201 West Broad Streets, and a small vacant parcel at the corner of South Maple Avenue and West Broad Street. The proposed project includes a new mixed-use building, as well as improvements to existing buildings at George Mason Square and 150 South Washington. As proposed, the new mixed-use building includes ground floor retail on Broad, Washington, Maple, Annadale, and along Interior Street through the project. Grocery use on ground floor at the corner of Maple and Broad. Mezzanine-level retail, commercial space along Interior Street and Broad Street. Upper-level office use, approximately 43,000 square feet of that. Six levels of residential building with 246 units above ground floor retail and office. And nine to 10 levels of structured parking with approximately 969 spaces. Proposed upgrades to existing buildings as part of the overall project include first level facade improvements to George Mason Square buildings and upgrades to courtyard, and site and facade improvements to the existing office building located at 150 South Washington Street. The development applications include special exceptions to allow residential use within the mixed-use development, and to increase in building height from a maximum of 75 feet to a maximum of 115 feet. Additionally, the applicant will be requesting a waiver to the property deed covenants. The two properties at the intersection of Maple and Broad, including the Taylor parcel and a small vacant parcel at the corner, were conveyed by the city to Atlantic in 2013, and the deed for those two properties include covenants restricting residential uses on the property. Since the deed also includes a provision that authorizes the city to waive all or any portion of these covenants, the city council has the authority to grant such waiver as part of the SE approval. Staff has asked the applicant to provide a written request and justification with supporting documents for council's consideration as part of the overall development proposal. In terms of application status, this is their first submission, and staff has reviewed the materials and provided comments, which is in the report attachments. The applicant intends to submit their revised submission in mid-May, and as part of that submission, they will respond to staff comments and feedback from council this evening, as well as pending comments received at our scheduled pre-referral, referral planning commission work session and boards and commission town hall, both scheduled for April 21st. Terms of staff review, pending submission of the voluntary concessions in support of the application, staff has provided a preliminary review of the project. The applicant intends to provide their first draft of the VCs with their second submission in May. So staff, staff's initial analysis is subject to change based on the VCs as the project moves forward. Staff evaluates these development proposals based on the comprehensive plans, small-area plans, zoning code, and other relevant codes and policies. As proposed, the project begins to demonstrate many of the principles included in these guiding policies and regulations. As the project moves forward in the public review process, staff will work with the applicant to develop the project further based on input from council, boards and commissions, and the public. In terms of fiscal impact, a detailed report from Becky Witzman with the projected net annual fiscal impact analysis for the project is provided at the end of the staff comments letter. In summary, the expected fiscal impact is $744,000 annually. These fiscal projections may change based on the developers' commitments to commercial and grocery square footage is proposed in the project by way of voluntary concessions. In terms of schedule, a detailed tentative schedule is provided at the end of the report. Council public hearing for referral to boards and commissions is anticipated in June 2021, with final consideration and public hearing in November 2021. That's, that's all I have. I'll, I'm happy to take questions anytime, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Andrew Painter for his presentation.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Painter.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tarter and members of council. Good evening. Andrew Painter with Wash Kaluchi. I have a, I know that the hour's late, and there are still more items on the agenda. We do have a brief presentation. I just want to highlight a couple of things. First, we did receive the first round of comments a few weeks ago, about 40 some-odd pages or so. We are looking to resubmit in early May. We're going through those comments right now. We also had the, the benefit of appearing before the EDC at its December and February meetings, and we're happy to walk through those comments at their time. We did take those, those comments to heart, and we're kind of working through them as well. Ms. Master, if we can move to the next slide, please? Just real quick, just, you know, just to show you, introduce who our project team is, and we have several of our members on, on the phone this evening. Atlantic Realty is obviously the owner and developer. Urban Limited is our civil engineer and landscape designer. Our architect and urban planning is DCS, and you might remember Davis Carter Scott being the designer of the Harris Cedar Building at 301 West Broad Street. And then we all just heard from Maria Lashinger with the EYA project, and she's with Grove Slade, and so she is our transportation engineer. And I wanted to also mention KLNB. They are our office and retail leasing experts, and we thought it was very important to involve our retail brokers from the very beginning as a part of our design team, you know, just to make sure that we had, you know, we were always thinking ahead as far as, you know, filling the space and teneting the spaces for our commercial. If we can go to the next slide, please? And at this point in time, I don't know if Adam Schulman from Atlantic is on the line, but I'd like for him to give just a couple of words about the importance of this project from Atlantic's perspective. So Adam, if you're available?
Yep. Thank you, Andrew. As most of you know, my name is Adam Schulman. I'm one of the partners with Atlantic Realty, and more specifically, the partner in charge of the Falls Church projects and the Falls Church developments. We are a long-term corporate citizen of Falls Church, have been involved with the city for well over 20 years, have developed assets such as Pearson Square and 400 Maple, and continue to own and have owned George Mason Square, 150 South Washington, and have worked over the years on a number of different development angles and, and ideas for those, for those projects. With, with that said, I do believe that with all the thought and all the iteration that we've gone through over the years, that we have a total package here that really works for us, and we think that really worked for that corner and really worked well with the city of Falls Church's goals and objectives. It is something that has downtown housing, it is something that has retail, it continues with the existing office and adds additional commercial and office space on, on top of that. And it is something that we tried very hard to come up with as a package that was a win on, on many levels. One thing to keep in mind is that we are a lot different than many of the developers that you will find today, not just in this area, but throughout the, throughout the country. We are, we're not fee developers, we are long-term holders of assets. We come into assets looking at something that will make it better for, for us and for the jurisdiction that, that we're working with. We want to be partners with our community, and that is something that we, we certainly continue to do. So when we're building this project, it's not something that we're looking to be done and out with. It's something that we plan on being with the city for a long time. And, and we think that we have a project that, that we can do that, and we'll, we'll be very successful with on, on many fronts. One big thing that I know is also sensitive to the city is that all of the commercial that we're going to be building here is going to be upfront. So there's no concern here with whether or not we're going to be building the residential and whether the commercial will come down later on, on down the path. I know that has been a concern with other developments. That would, that would not be the, the concern here, because the commercial is, is really sitting below what is going to be our housing structure. And obviously, you need that before you can get, get to the, the next level. Well, with, with that said, I know that it is a late hour, and I, I could go on and on, and I, I don't, I don't want to and, and take up everybody's time, so I'm going to turn this back to Mr. Painter and have him go on. But I'm happy to answer any questions, whether it's this evening or some point in the future. And thank you all very much for your consideration, as always.
Thank you. Mr. Painter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Mester, if we can go to the next one, thank you. I think we all know where the site is located, but it is five separate parcels of record. Number four is George Mason Square, the existing complex, as well as the older parking structure. Want to highlight parcel number five, the triangular portion of the property that's at the southeastern corner of Maple and Annandale. That is an existing parking lot today, it's actually a part of the one fifty South Washington project parcel. And then, of course, you know, the corner parcel that Ms. Ruzi had mentioned, number one, right at the intersection of Maple and West Broad Street, and the Matt's Tailoring Parcel, which is number two. Those were conveyed to the city, by the city to Atlantic Realty, and they are under the, the residential restriction covenant. And then, of course, number three is the BB and Tank Building, BB and T Bank Building. And as I've discussed, we are proposing to retain the existing one fifty South Washington Street office building and the George Mason Square complex, and upgrade the triangular parking lot into a meaningful open space for, for this section of the city. Everything is also zoned to the B-two general business district. If we can go to the next slide, please. In terms of comprehensive plan, Ms. Ruzi had mentioned this, and I just want to touch on this too. What's shown on the left is the future land use map, and it designates this property for mixed-use development, which encourages innovative residential retail and commercial office uses. This is incorporated, of course, into the two thousand and five comprehensive plan as amended, and also incorporated into the two thousand and five comprehensive plan amendment was the city center concept plan, snippet of which, from that application, is shown in the upper right-hand corner. And that showed high-density commercial development, along with a new mid-block crossing across West Broad Street, and a traffic circle at Annandale and Maple, opposite or Catty Corner to the site, of course, at the bowling alley, as part of that city center project. And those concepts were also incorporated into the two thousand and fourteen Downtown Small Area Plan, which is shown in the lower right-hand corner of the screen. And that small area plan includes this property within what is known as the core commercial area of downtown Falls Church. And this is really an area that is intended to develop into a dense, walkable, bicycle-friendly district. And so we really view this, as Adam said, as sort of a, a very positive step in the implementation of the city's comprehensive planning goals, which really date back, you know, more than fifteen years. If we can go to the next slide, please. As Ms. Ruzi had mentioned, there's, there's really three specific council requests that, that are a part of this. Number one is the special exception for mixed-use development. Number two is the special exception for an increase in height to one hundred and fifteen feet, which is the maximum that's permitted under the B-two zoning district. And number three is an amendment to the special warranty deed, which Ms. Ruzi had mentioned about the residential restriction. And we are, we will be working with city staff and the city attorney's office on that in conjunction with our next submission. We can go to the next slide. Just picking up on something that Adam had said as well, you know, when we approached the site, we established five, I would call them key design drivers, that have really driven our approach to everything that's happened with, with how we've designed the site. And I would just want to march through them. Some of them might resonate with you, as some of us have dined in the vicinity of the site, dined on the site, we've jogged on the site, we've walked past the site. The first is really to view the site holistically, as a key component to, to the downtown area. This is an area that's long been planned to evolve into a vibrant downtown hub. It's a site that has long waited, waited a very long time for the right mix of land uses to help realize the city's comprehensive plan visions. And that dovetails into number two, which is to celebrate the site's visibility and really have a strong outward face on all street frontages. This is almost an entire city block within the city's downtown core commercial area. It is surrounded on all side, by, on all sides by streets. It has a lot of visibility, it has a lot of opportunity, but it also has a lot of design responsibility. And so every street frontage, every facade, we have tried to treat it as such. Third, of course, is to enhance pedestrian connectivity, and we're, we're doing that in a number of ways, which we can talk about. Fourth, and this is critically important, that goes to what Adam was saying, we're trying to attract non-residential foot traffic at a time when retail and office asset classes are suffering. But Atlantic, in conjunction with its real estate brokers, have really given a lot of thought about, you know, the types of commercial that works, the types of commercial that's leasable, because I think the last thing that any of us want is to have any of these spaces be dark. And, and finally, linked to that is thinking about the right type of residential. This is residential that not only addresses the continuum of housing opportunities in downtown Falls Church, but will also help ensure the economic success and commercial viability of the entire downtown area. We can go to the next slide, please. You know, just to walk through the, the three main components, if you had to distill this down, and actually, let's go to the next slide, might be a little bit easier. George Mason Square, shown in red in the upper right-hand corner, we are proposing to retain, retain that, as we are the existing commercial office building at one fifty South Washington Street, shown in purple. Together, that's about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of, of commercial uses. Shown in blue is the new mixed-use building and new structured parking garage, which we'll talk about in a second. Linking the two of them together, George Mason Square and the proposed mixed-use building, is shown in green, which is this booner, this, the shared street. Going across West Broad Street, shown in yellow, linking this up with Mr. Brown's Park and Hunan West Broad and Dogwood is a proposed mid-block crossing. And then, as I mentioned, the triangular parking lot that's at the corner of Maple and Annandale, we are proposing to upgrade that to a substantial open space. Want to talk about a couple of aspects of this, if we can go to the next slide. First, with regards to George Mason Square, as I mentioned, we're proposing to retain the existing office building on the site. We are proposing to remove the arcade at that intersection, the intersection of West Broad and South Washington Street, and really make this a much more welcoming and inviting and ultimately successful area. And that also includes facade enhancements for the first two floors, really that first twenty feet that you meet at eye level when you're walking around the site. We're also proposing to renovate the ground floor pedestrian plaza with landscaping and hardscaping and seating areas and lighting, and then adding ground-level bumpouts for restaurant uses along South Washington Street and other outdoor seating area opportunities. I think a lot of us remember when Four P's bumped out its portion of, along West Broad Street, and what that did to that streetscape, and I, we'd like to do the same thing along South Washington Street. We can go to the next slide. The new mixed-use building, as I mentioned, we're going to be demolishing the former BB and T building and the tailoring building, and as well as the existing garage, and replacing it with a new four hundred and thirty thousand square foot lead gold mixed-use building. We are also proposing to replace the existing garage with a much more modern and efficient parking structure, which we have found is absolutely critical to leasing, and frankly, for those that rely on this structure for public parking, critical for accessing downtown. In terms of breaking up the uses for this new mixed-use building, it's really two major components. The commercial usage, and that's, that's about a hundred and nine, a hundred and ten thousand square feet, or about twenty-five percent of the total square footage. Sixty-six thousand plus square feet will be retail, and we've lined retail on all of our site frontages. And we've also designated about twenty-six thousand five hundred square feet at the intersection of Maple Avenue and West Broad Street, across from the CVS, ideally for a single-use anchor tenant. And, and those discussions are ongoing as part of our overall retail program. And then, this also proposes forty-three thousand square feet of new office space, which would be on the third level of the proposed mixed-use building. In terms of residential, we are proposing two hundred and forty-six new units. About seventy-one percent of those would be studios and one-bedrooms, and one-bedrooms with work areas. And then twenty-nine percent, and there's a misnomer on this slide, but twenty-nine percent for seventy-two units would be two bedrooms and two bedrooms with dens. And incorporated into all of this, of course, would be amenities for the residential units, but there would also be amenities for commercial tenants as well, which also would be shared by the commercial tenants within the existing George Mason Square office building complex. We can go to the next slide. Just to talk a little bit more about this sort of booner. Booner is a, is a Dutch word, it's a Dutch-style living street that treats pedestrians and vehicles equally. Right now, when you go to the George Mason Square Plaza, it really acts as kind of a dead end. There's not, there's nothing, you know, outside of it. This booner is meant to not only provide access, one of our four access points into our parking garage, but it's also meant to be this sort of shared space where you can, you know, the pedestrian experience can kind of spill out of George Mason Square into the booner, which will be lined with new retail. And so George Mason Square now is no longer a dead end, but it will now be the center of the square. And so, you know, the other thing about the booner is that it breaks up a very large, long block. This is an entire city block, and so this sort of slashes right through the middle of it, but again, provides access to our parking structure. If you take a look at the upper left-hand image, that is an image of, of the booner, our first design iteration, as you look directly from Mr. Brown's Park into the site. So you can see Four P's and the existing George Mason Square complex on the left, you can see the new mixed-use building on the right, which is lined with ground floor retail, and you can see the office and commercial and mezzanine spaces above that. And at the end of the booner is the entrance to the parking garage. So there will necessarily be traffic that will, that will use that garage, that will see the retail to make that viable along the booner. And at the end of the booner would be this thirty-by-forty outdoor screen panel, LED screen panel, which could be used to cover city events and retail advertising, but things like watch night performances and Memorial Day parade. And, and then, of course, the idea is to close off the booner to pedestrian traffic only, and allow for sort of screen-on-the-green events and outdoor concerts and other types of theatrical performances. If we can go to the next slide. This next slide is titled Transportation, and it's my last slide, which I'll, you know, before I'll turn it over to the architect to walk through a couple of the images. But just to walk around some of the, the site from a transportation perspective and a couple of other things. In terms of absolute trips on, on the overall transportation network, this application reduces the trips by almost half over, over the by right, what can be done as a matter of right on the site today. We are proposing to upgrade all the sidewalks per the streetscape standards adopted in two thousand and seventeen. We're proposing a new covered bus shelter to replace the uncovered one along West Broad Street. As I mentioned, we're proposing a mid-block crossing to connect this site with sort of the Hunan West Broad, Mr. Brown's Park, Dogwood side of West Broad Street, and have a pedestrian-actuated hawk signal to stop traffic and allow that pedestrian movement mid-block. And I think that's absolutely critical to not only get retail patrons from the north side to the south side and vice versa, but just to make the overall downtown framework for retail and, and pedestrian connectivity really work. We have a series of pedestrian bike upgrades that we're proposing at Maple and West Broad. We have been working, including a meeting today with the city's engineering staff and planning department staff, about a study that the city is doing at that intersection by the bowling alley to upgrade it to an enhanced intersection or to a traffic circle. We would, of course, prefer the traffic circle, we think it makes a lot of sense in this part of downtown. And then, we have a series of submission documents, you know, related to our transportation. And as I mentioned, we are proposing to upgrade the triangle parking lot into a new open space, and that's about, that's over ten thousand square feet. So that's about four or five times the size of Mr. Brown's Park, just to give you a sense of that. At this point in time, I would like to turn it over to Thomas Ninni to spend the last couple of minutes just walking through sort of the architecture first, with what we're proposing at George Mason Square, and then the mixed-use building. So Thomas, if you are on the line, I would ask you to walk us through these images.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it. Good evening. Again, my name is Thomas Ninni, I'm with Davis Carter Scott, I'm the architect on the project. We're going to show you some slides, and you can see here in the sheets of what we're planning to do with, for instance, in this slide, you can see the existing George Mason Square buildings. And what we're looking at is, is enhancing the, the base of the building, we're adding some retail on the first floor, and also taking also, in fact, the second floor of the building, and emphasizing the office that it will be on the second, that is there on the second floor. And again, we'll be cleaning the building and putting some more paint and, and, and other enhancements as we move out through, through the buildings. Next slide, please. We're going to go more quickly through the floor plans. This is the lowest level, which is on the corner of West Annandale and South Maple Avenue. As you can see, the roundabout, this is where we have the entrance to the garage that will be serving the grocery store that it will be above that. And here, you can also see the loading dock, there will be access from Annandale, from West Annandale. Next slide, please. This is what we call the first floor, at the access, where it's access from West Broad Street. And it's essentially, you can see in green is our grocery store, and then to go into the right, you'll start seeing the base of the building where we have the retail on, on the new building, and then also in George Mason Square. Again, shown in orange, dark, you know, orange is all the retail that you'll be on the first floor. And as Andrew mentioned, we'll have the booner right there in the middle that will be then also used for events for the weekend. And as you can see, we also then have the garage. And then the garage is going to start going up, following the building as we move forward. Next slide, please. Here is the mezzanine level. As you know, the grocery store area is a quite high bay space, it's about thirty feet. So our idea here is to, we pick up a, a mezzanine area that could be used for retail, could be used for some other type of use that is, that is access, and then has a nice frontage into the booner, and also into the retail. And again, it's also connected to the retail, sorry, to the, to the garage. Next slide, please. This is our office building floor. What we're doing here is, well, the building on the, on the outside will be surrounded by offices, and then in the middle will have a conference center. The conference center will be accessed also by the existing George Mason Square buildings that we, there are, there are on the site. And again, you can see this also tied to the garage. Next floor, you can see here, this is the beginning of our residential floor, and we'll start going up in the next slides. But it's about two hundred and forty-six units on the top floor. We'll have a, we'll have a roof pool area that you can see, sorry. You can see on the bottom right corner, right there, so it will be nice amenities. So the top of the garage will have a beautiful area with a pool and, and some type of a amenity space as well. Next slide, please. And here is a more perspective. As you can see, the top left corner is the entrance to the corner where the grocery store will be on the first floor. You can see the little bit more of a, a different angle on the right-hand side. You can see a little bit more of the street. And then on the bottom two slides, you can see those entrances into the warner's, as we described, that would have then the, the retail on, on either side, and then the two-story element in glass, which would be some type probably will be the office, and then you'll have the mezzanine. There might, we might have a, a fitness center or something in there as well. Next slide, please. And again, these are more of the images as we go around. And, and you can see what we're trying to do with the building is that we're not trying to make the building look as one. We're trying to make the building with different types of architectures, or the building looks like it's, it's been built through, you know, through different years, so it's not all built on one. So we're trying to create something that it's, it's unique. So, next slide, please. And I think those are it.
Thank you, Thomas.
I tried to go as fast as I could, so.
Thank you very much, Thomas. And these are the issues that were raised by EDC, which, you know, we, we can address those tonight or at a later point in time. Affordable housing, fiscal impact, which we heard information on, the status of public parking, status of an anchor commitment, making sure that we reach out to existing tenants and we have sufficient protections and engage with those businesses during the construction process, and then opportunities for public art. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I turn it back over to you. We, our entire team is happy to answer any questions. We appreciate your indulgence at this late hour.
Sure, absolutely. So thank you so much for that presentation, very interesting. So I want to open it up to questions and comments, but I would just say this, that we're not going to be able to get through every nugget and every little kernel of this project tonight. And so the idea, I think, would be to have a quick overview of questions and quick overview of comments, and then move on to the next items on the agenda. So we're going to start with Mr. Lipton House, Ross.
Thanks, Dave. The turn into the booner, the parking from Broad Street, does that, does that allow for a left turn-in going west on Broad?
And so I, yeah, so, yeah, so turning in there, and because, so Maria, or do I feel that one, Maria?
I do, good evening, again, Maria Lashinger with Grove Slade. Yes, the answer is yes, it's currently allowing for a left turn-in.
Okay. So just looking at the project, and I've got comments about a, a number of things, but it is getting kind of late. I, I have concerns about that booner, I mean, specifically for a left turn-in on Broad. I mean, specifically for a left turn-in on Broad Street, just looking at the traffic backup there, what could potentially be coming. That's going to radically change, I think, that section of Broad Street, which Andrew, when you were talking about running by, having drinks, sitting outside, you know, I think about parking, I'm sorry, when I think about traffic stacked up, turning into that main entrance, which is the main ingress, if I'm not mistaken, for getting in and parking in the building. I have serious concerns with that being kind of the main entrance to the parking and what that's going to do to that section of Broad Street. I mean, frankly, I'm not particularly happy with the main entrance to 301 West Broad being on Broad Street, although I think from an engineering perspective, I'm not sure exactly how we could have saw for that. But nonetheless, I think I'd like to see main entrances being off of Broad Street, and certainly the left turn-in concerns me. I will tell you, I do like the unit mix that you guys are proposing for the residential. I like the fact that it's stacked more heavily towards studio and one bedroom. You're, I think the architect team had mentioned the different treatments on the facade for the aesthetics of the building, making it look like it was not built at the same time, not so monolithic. I'd like to see some additional thought given to the cornice lines on the building, or even if it's a height change. I, again, I like the fact that you've got different applications and treatments on the side of the building, so it doesn't look monolithic. But I think an adjustment to the cornice line, so it didn't look like one big straight block across the roof line, would be helpful. If it's a height change difference, that might do it. If it's a different treatment up there on the cornice line, maybe that'll do it. But I'd like to see that broken up a little bit. And then my last question for you all, for the existing office building, I know that we had raised some of those concerns about, you know, existing businesses and tenants and the disruption. But I'm also interested to know, will you guys be doing any significant upgrades to the interior or the building systems, anything to kind of, I'd say, improve the effective age of that existing office building, other than the aesthetic facade changes at ground level?
Adam, I'll turn that one over to you. I do not believe there's any changes proposed to 150, interior changes proposed to 150 of George Mason Square at this time.
At this time, there's nothing specific that we have in line to upgrade for both of these buildings, both 150 South Washington and George Mason. We have been upgrading the interiors as we go over the years. We've done quite a number of upgrades internally in 150 South Washington. I'm not sure if you, if everybody has been in there recently, but it looks much different than it did, say, 510 or even longer years ago, without question. And George Mason is the same thing. We've been working on making a number of replacements there and upgrades, and will continue to do so over the years. But there's nothing specific that I can tell you we're planning on doing X in the immediate near future, other than the fact that we, to say that we continue to upgrade as we go.
Okay. And so you guys are expecting some bump in the rents, but nothing substantial?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, great. And then Andrew, just one last thing. I'd love to see some shots of, if you guys have some renderings of what it would look like standing street level along the retail inside the Wooner. I mean, you've got shots coming from Broad and then the other part coming from South Washington, but I'd love to see what it looks like inside of there. So I just have concerns that it'll look more like a closed-in alley on the retail piece, but I can't really get a, I can't get a good beat on the dimension. So I'll pass the torch to some other folks, let them ask questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I won't repeat the questions from EDC, since we already saw this twice. But the two new ones I had is really around green space percentage with that corner spot. You don't need to answer it now, but I'd like to know kind of what the total percentage green space is. And then maybe related to Ross's point. So we have access from Broad Street, but I don't see porosity from Maple or South Washington. So some sort of east-west access, because those are pretty big city blocks. I wonder if that would help break things up as well, potentially provide car access as well and get it off the main street if that's going to be a transportation concern. But as a pedestrian, having run both those routes, it'd be nice to have some access into the development without having to go all the way through the Wooner.
Okay.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments, questions? If not, I've got a few. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Thank you, Adam and Andrew, for capturing the EDC's points that we made, which I will try not to repeat. I did want to ask about the roundabout. I don't think we talked too much about that. Is that perceived as a controlled roundabout or more like a, you know, free-form traffic flows through and yields sort of roundabout?
Mr. Duncan, it's my understanding, I recognize Ms. Rusi as well, that that would be a non-controlled rotary. And the city right now, through a revenue-sharing program, is studying both the rotary concept and an upgraded intersection. And I believe that they just issued a report, the city's consultant just issued a report, which will be coming before council later this year for review.
Okay, good. That's just something I'd like us to discuss more thoroughly. I guess my personal experience going into the district for many years and walking across Washington Circle was, you know, that it's really not very safe for pedestrians, a uncontrolled roundabout. Controlled roundabouts safer, although still a little dicey sometimes. So I don't know, I'm not completely sold on the notion that the roundabout is the way to go, so I look forward to hearing and learning more about that. On other traffic matters, Maria Lashinger, I wanted to ask, the section about traffic volumes contains some information that, you know, I can guarantee you 99 out of 100 citizens in Falls Church would not believe, which are that, based on Vidas' published historical traffic counts, traffic volumes on Broad Street in Washington in the vicinity of the project have not increased since 2015. Now, I, you know, I think that's probably true, but hardly anybody believes that. So I just want to make sure that our numbers are, you know, checked and double-checked and that, you know, the expectations of growth, which I think is, in spite of the fact that the data don't show any growth, you build in a 0.15% per year increase in volume, which, you know, sounds prudent to build in some kind of increase. At any rate, you know, again, as we go out in the community and sell these projects, traffic and parking are invariably, you know, very high on the list of citizens' concerns. And, oh, just another little thing on page 29 of your study. I think Founders Row and Broad in Washington are both factored into your traffic counts, which is good, because that's not a question you get from people. Well, all this development we're doing, well, you've built the Founders Row and Broad in Washington counts into it already, so that's good. But I think Founders Row is described as still having the movie theater rather than the senior living. So just make sure you update that and make sure your numbers, I don't imagine they're hardly any different, but they might be a little different between a hotel, I'm sorry, I should have said hotel, is what you've got categorized there, and it's, of course, a senior living building. The other point I wanted to make had to do with, oh, the parking, right. The staff comments refer to the garage. I mean, it seems to me like it's very likely that this is going to become the public parking garage for downtown. Is that what you all want? Have you built enough space to accommodate that? If you haven't, can you? I mean, to me, this is, if there is a place to do density in terms of height in Falls Church, you know, away from West Falls, this is the location to do it. So in terms of providing parking, as part of the structure, you've got to make sure that you're accommodating people who want to drive and park and then walk across to Brown's Hardware or the State Theater or whatever. And I think that that is realistically what's going to happen with this building or what wants to happen with this building. And I'd say a little bit the same thing about affordable housing. I would, I would like to hear you all come to us with a proposal to do a more affordable housing, understanding that, you know, there might be a density bonus for that, because, again, the place to do important things is this site. Okay, I'll leave it at that for right now, but I appreciate, I appreciate the proposal. I love the name. What City Center sounds classy and big time. So thank you for bringing this for our consideration.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I'm going to pass, because my parking question was the same as Phil's. Thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, Ms. Snyder?
So how much of the commercial is existing commercial?
There is 120,000 square feet, approximately 120,000 square feet is existing commercial. And then there would be an additional on top of that, let me just make sure I've got the numbers correct. There would be 109,912 square feet of new commercial.
And have you done any, like, shadow studies and elevations? Like, if I'm living in the neighborhood, you know, the area, the Winter Hill area, what am I going to see or not see as a result of this?
So, yeah, and I believe, Thomas, we did have shadow studies included within our project viewbook with our initial submission. I believe we did.
Yes, we did. And we also had a lot of different images from the neighborhood with the existing buildings around our new development.
So this is a grocery store that'll be a couple hundred feet from another major grocery store, which will be another hundred, couple feet from yet a third grocery store. What evidence is it that that's actually going to work from other locations? And considering the market that all three of these drug grocery stores would draw from, why is there any indication that they'll, that it will actually generate the net commercial that it's expect, that you're projecting that it will?
So just to be clear, I mean, you know, I think in our discussions with the grocer and stuff, which we are not absolutely committing to at this point in time, because we do not want to have, we want this project to be able to stand on its own merits, you know, be very clear about that. We don't want to have a situation where, you know, we overly promise something just to get a project approved, and then it doesn't pan out. So our fiscals are not based upon having a grocery store. I will say that 26,500 square feet lends itself naturally to a single-use retail tenant, because it's high bay, you know, it's perfect for a major user like that. Adam, I kind of defer to you on this, but my understanding at least is that grocery stores enjoy being near competition. And we also understand in talks with potential tenants that the city offers a sense of place that grocery stores want to be in. The city's downtown is much more dense. It has a sense of place that's walkable. It's not in, you know, an anonymous ubiquitous strip center out on Lee Highway in Fairfax County. And I also understand from the Department of Economic Development that the city's grocery stores have not seen a precipitous drop in revenue per square foot with the introduction of new stores, and that they're really drawing, they're not cannibalizing the existing city market, they're actually drawing from areas and customers that are located outside of the city. And, you know, my experience, at least in shopping at the, you know, the Tenor Hill Target, for example, is that the more places that one can access quality food and accessories, the better. And I also understand, too, that there might be a sense that the market should be able to dictate this, and each grocer is also just a little bit different. And I would imagine that if a grocer is here, it makes the locational decision to locate here in proximity to a Whole Foods or Harris Teeter, that it too will be a little bit different.
Yeah, so I'll be interested in all your support, just support that. Did you have any other comments? I mean, I don't, it's a fairly complex question. So if it's not a grocery store, what would it likely be in order to generate the kind of commercial activity that we're interested in?
It cast me, I don't know if we have the answer to that right now. Again, our fiscals were not predicated upon having that grocer or the single user. It's kind of just the baseline. And if we are able through this process to commit to, you know, a single anchor tenant or a grocer, then obviously we'll be updating fiscals to reflect that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Those are the questions I had tonight.
Okay. Other questions or comments? If not, I've got a few myself, so let me go ahead and get started. So let me ask, this is for the city manager, city staff. They're proposing a 115-foot-tall building. How tall is the Harris Teeter building and where else do we have 115 feet in the city?
I'd like to refer that to Ms. Rusi.
I apologize, I don't have the answer to that question, but I think we'll get back to you on that. Check the height of Harris Teeter and then see whether the projects are in height.
Jim Snyder here. This area, the core commercial area that was referred to in the small area plan, because of its separation from other parts of the city with major roadways, is a place where we anticipated being able to use the full height through the special exception process of up to 115 feet, 75 feet by right, I believe, in B2, which is the existing zoning, and another 45 feet by special exception through the city council.
Got it. I guess my question still stands, where else in the city have we used 115 feet? And I guess if you all could get back to me, that'd be good to know. Particularly of interest is the Harris Teeter store close by.
I believe it is. It's above 75 feet. I don't believe it's quite at 115, but we'll get you the number.
That, and also the Whole Foods site as well, just the total height on that as well? So a couple other comments, thoughts. I do have some concerns about the Wooner. What I would want to make sure is it doesn't turn into kind of a glorified alley or, you know, kind of end up used like an alley with poor retail visibility. And so I think it has the possibility of something being exciting, but I just feel like it also just as easily could end up being a, essentially, a sort of forgotten alley that retail doesn't thrive there, but doesn't do well. So I guess I would just say that I want to make sure we give that as much thought as it needs. I do think there are probably traffic control issues that I don't know if city staff has fully contemplated. I do appreciate in a lot of ways your creativity. To me, you're thinking outside the box with a lot of what you presented here, both in your architecture and, you know, it's certainly a very thoughtful proposal, at least to my mind, with a lot of consideration being given to a lot of different aspects of this, which I appreciate from a developer, particularly early on. The off, the open space gives me a bit of pause as well. I feel like it could be orphaned across sort of fairly major roads. And just to, for my own edification, for some reason, I'm not able to place that. Is that the tip of the PMA buildings, you know, the pulmonary medical associates buildings? Or what is that land? I'm having a hard time picturing it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's directly across from the bowling alley. And you're right, it backs up to those buildings.
Got it.
And it's an orphaned piece of property, because, you know, it used to be all part of the same track or the same parcel record until Annandale, West Annandale Road was pushed through in the late 1960s.
Yeah.
And so it's sitting there. And that triangular piece in the city's planning documents has been planned for, you know, upgrades as far as public open space and things like that for the past 15 years, thinking that everything around it from the, you know, the bowling alley site and this site would eventually grow very, very dense, and this then becomes a park that's in the center of everything, if that makes sense.
Got it. And how many square feet approximately is that open space?
It's a little over 10,000 square feet.
Got it. So again, my concern would just be that it kind of gets orphaned and be, and becomes a piece of property that's sort of no man's land. But again, I appreciate your creative thinking and coming to us with some open space, which we don't see a lot of in development. So I think that just needs a little more thought. I like the idea of these bump outs along, you know, Washington or, yeah, not Washington, Broad Street, maybe Washington as well. I think creating some undulations, some interest on street level is exciting, and I think that's an excellent idea. I think this site being so large also, it'd be great to see bike share as part of your proposal. Am I right in hearing that your garage is going to be like nine stories tall, maybe 10 stories tall?
Thomas, do you want to answer that? And I believe, well, some is also below grade, working into the site grid as well.
Yes, that is correct. We also have, right now, we have a one level below grade, and then we're going to go up seven stories up. So we're finalizing the garage and working with a parking consultant as well, so.
Are you think people are going to go up seven stories, you know, garage zinging around?
What we're going to do is, well, first of all, the garage has several entrances and certain different levels. Actually, it's connected to three different levels, the garage. And the way that we're going to do the garage is that we'll have some dedicated parking spaces at certain levels for the residential others. So you'll go up knowing that that's where your parking spaces would be.
Got it. It still just seems like a lot. I don't know if you could bury it deeper into the, you know, into the grade? And what is your grade? you know, into the grade. And what is your grade difference? I think it's pretty steep, if recollection serves. Is, is it, uh, what's the grade from front to back, the fall?
Um, if I'm on Broad, if I'm on West Broad Street, it's about gonna be twelve feet higher than West Annandale Road.
Okay, so just twelve. I don't know why I was thinking it's more than that.
Yeah, but then, then on the, on the Washington, on the, on the South Washington, it's like an eight foot difference. So, yeah, it's not, it's, it's got different, different, uh, spot elevations throughout, yes.
Got it. So I would echo the, the comment about shared parking. This is a prime opportunity to just take a little bit of pressure off our limited existed part, existing parking. And so I would suggest that, uh, that would be something I, I, I at least would think would be important. I do also, um, also echo the comment about porosity in having some more, uh, ingress egress points, um, both for pedestrians, vehicles, bicyclists on the site. It seems like Maple in particular sort of is, is seeking one to get people in from different places, but even Annandale. Um, it'd be nice to have different ways to cut through this site. It's, it is pretty massive. It's pretty dense. And so I think I would echo Ross's concern about also like kind of left ends. Having a Broad Street as your main entrance. Um, I think that's challenging to do the Wooner, have your main entrance and have retail on the same sort of plane. But again, I appreciate your creativity and your, your, um, you know, thinking outside the box, but that one might need just some more refinement. Um. So the grocery store size, I, I personally don't have an issue necessarily with grocery stores. I do think they want to be co-located and I suspect they know best where they're gonna make a profit and where they're gonna be, have business interest. But can you give us an idea, twenty-seven thousand square feet, is that sort of a whole, a, um, a Trader Joe's size? Or is Trader Joe's a little bit smaller than that or, um, a Lidl? What's the, what's the, uh, GFA of like a, a Lidl or, or Trader Joe's? Do you know?
A Trader Joe's is very close to that size.
Got it.
Isn't a twenty, twenty-two thousand square feet. Uh, if I may, uh, Mr. Mayor, please, uh, on this slide, you can see there are one, two, three, four, um, uh, green circles with a P on it. Those represent entrances to the garage.
I got it. I, I, I guess I would say, I mean, that I appreciate. I do think though you need some porosity for just individuals to not walk through a garage. But, you know, for cut-throughs, a hole in your building or something where people can have more than one entrance to get through the site, which is pretty massive. Um, and so I would suggest some of those Ps, it'd be nice if those could turn into, uh, you know, not for cars, but for pedestrians in other ways, just some cut-throughs, a breakup of the building, uh, something that, that is not just garage entrances, but actually for pedestrians to go through.
Okay. Um, we will show those.
Yeah, and then also, um, with, it does appear that the massing is pretty, pretty heavy. And so I think the notion of trying to break up your massing in different ways, uh, would be, would be helpful. Um, let me just see what else I've got here. Uh, Wyatt, has city staff looked at this from a traffic perspective or not so much yet?
Uh, yeah, this is Akita. They're, we're looking at that. We did have some comments, conceptual level comments as part of the, uh, first submission review comments, but they're looking at that.
Got it. Okay. I would also say if you're able, the, um, you know, the, the facade of your office. I, I certainly appreciate you doing work on the first floor or two. Um, it may be that it would certainly benefit from something above that, if that's possible. I guess I would just suggest you to maybe, um, give some consideration, uh, to that. Um, trying to think of what else I have. Those are just sort of my initial thoughts. Uh, but there's a lot of, of, of interesting, uh, aspects to your project. Um, and so I, I guess I'm gonna ask, looks like Phil has additional comments. Let's turn it over to him. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, I meant to ask, how much of the new construction is, uh, steel over concrete?
Thomas, I don't know if you want to answer that. I know that the first three levels will be concrete. And then above that, the residential would be metal construction, I believe?
It, it is, yes. It's, it's concrete and metal. There's no wood. It's all concrete and steel.
The building, it, it would have to be something other than wood frame.
I'm sorry? There's no wood.
The apartment building would have to be something other than wood frame, I believe, correct?
Yes, there is no wood frame.
Yeah, that was my, that was my assumption. I just couldn't remember if I'd asked or if I asked, if I'd forgotten. Uh, okay, uh, I was just looking online. Looks like, uh, Harris Teeter West Broad, uh, they asked for a high bonus of fifteen feet over the allowed seventy-five foot. So I think they asked for ninety and as Dave, I don't know, we should remember, we were on council. I think, I think they got, I think it's about ninety. Uh, but we can check that.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Appreciate that information. And I guess lastly for me, could you just go over the materials? It looks like masonry mostly. Uh, but could you just very quickly go over the materials you're proposing?
Sure. Uh, our intent here is to use a combination of masonry materials such as brick block, some other type of stone. At the same time, we'll be using some type of, uh, metal panels and, um, other materials, uh, that would, you know, give you like a metal mesh and other things throughout the building. So the idea is, yes, to use those materials.
Okay, um, that's all I've got. Um, it is getting late as well. Does anyone else have any final comments or questions? Mr. Snyder?
I do, a question about the residential component. Is there any reason why you're not going with condominiums? We're, we're building, um, I don't know, on the record, like six, seven hundred apartments in the next couple of years. Is there any reason why you didn't go with condominium?
I, 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 I will leave that up to, um, Atlantic Realty to, um, to, to make that decision.
Mr. Snyder, I can tell you that based on our research and, and what we've done here, that for the size of this project that, um, that we're working on, we, we believe that, uh, the apartment market is what will make this work and, and not a condominium project is just, it's, it's too large and, and if, if we shrunk it down to get it to a condominium size, it wouldn't, um, be financially viable.
So. So I, I guess to put a period on this, you're building what we don't need, but it fits into your profit margin. Thank you.
I will not object to that characterization, although I disagree with it. I mean, every, every regional study that I've seen says that this whole region needs more housing and Falls Church is always doing its part in every way, as, as Mr. Snyder well knows and is, uh, is often at the forefront of in many other areas.
All right. Are there any, any final comments? It is eleven fifteen. We have two more items, uh, to get through. So any last words? If not, I'm gonna thank, um, the developers, attorneys and his architects and team for coming before us tonight and, uh, how there'll be many more opportunities for you and for the public to comment as well. But we thank you for, for coming out and joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter.
Uh-huh. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item, the parking lot, uh, amendment. Mr. Shields?
Uh, thank you, and, um, what is, uh, council's asked is to authorize me to execute an amendment to the sale agreement with in-site development, uh, for the Park Place Parking Parcel. And that is to add a force majeure provision to it. We did view this as, um, not within the four corners of what the council authorized about a month and a half ago. And so we're coming back to council for permission on this or authorization on this. Uh, and really the request tonight is just to see if there are any questions on it and schedule it for formal consideration on the twelfth, your next meeting. Um, the city attorney has been working this issue most closely. Uh, so Ms. McCoskeri, in terms of the substance of it, would you want to speak to it?
Well, I think that what we have now is a fairly standard force majeure type clause that would be added. The way this, the arrangements work in the agreement is that they have to close on the property by, um, May. Uh, I'm sorry, January, at the end of January twenty twenty-four, which is the same time when the, that the special exception would expire. Subsequent to that, we've inserted milestones through an Exhibit D. And the milestones would require that they continue working on the project so that in the event the project stalled completely, the city would have some option to pursue a remedy to get the property back for purposes of a parking lot if it's not going to be used for the development. Um, those are the deadlines to which the force majeure provision would apply. Um, this was requested, uh, after council approved the prior agreement, um, because it was an issue that was raised by the developer's lender. So I think that, um, it's a reasonable provision. It was just omitted the first time around. And we have already signed the agreement that was previously approved without the force majeure clause. And so what we will be coming, um, to you with and what was an attachment to the current staff report is a very short amendment that adds the force majeure clause to Exhibit D, which is at the vet, end of the, um, agreement. And, um, and that is essentially the substance of the amendment that we will bring to you. So if there are any questions, or I'm also happy to talk with people during the week or next week when this comes before you.
All right. Any questions for Ms. McCroskey? All right, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So, um, city attorney, um, so we had a very unpleasant example of the use of a force majeure clause against the city in the West End.
Yes.
What is going, so tell me how this is gonna work, just very quickly. How, how is it gonna work? And are we setting ourselves up for another, uh, I'll call it abuse of the force majeure clause? By, by the other side?
I mean, I, I can't absolutely one hundred percent promise that that won't happen. But I don't think that it is a similar type of situation because in many ways this project is going to be, and the timing of it and the continued progression of it is going to be, um, governed by the, um, by the, uh, developer's lender who is gonna insist that they continue working on the project. Um, however, I think that, uh, also I think a force majeure clause is a fairly standard provision in virtually every contract. And we have tried to build in some protections that it only applies when it's causing actual delay and it's extreme events. Um, but there's always a possibility that somebody makes a claim that it wasn't, um, that it isn't a proper use of a force majeure clause, and we would have to address that at the time. Um, but I think that, that we were told the project will not go forward without this clause because the lender is requiring it. Um, and that is why we worked hard to negotiate something that would be reasonable, um, for these, uh, terms and the deadlines we had inserted into the agreement.
So, um, if, if the clause is exercised by the developer, what happens?
Um, there would be a, they would have to give us notice and then the, would, when they established that they were delayed in achieving one of the milestones in this Exhibit D, they would have an extension of the time to achieve that milestone before the city could exercise its remedy. And the city's remedy for failure to meet these milestones is to require them to transfer the property back to us. So the, I think that these are things that are gonna be happening after they've already closed on the property and then begin construction. And so I do think there's a fairly low likelihood that this would happen, but it is a standard type clause. And partly because of the recent pandemic, um, we are sensitive as a city to having someone make a claim under a force majeure clause that isn't really justified. But also, um, people, lenders, people who enter into these contracts are very sensitive that they've seen that the need for a force majeure clause can arise suddenly um, and without warning, which is what happened when the pandemic happened, um, in certain cases. So I think that's why, why the lender is absolutely insisting that something be in there.
So the effect of this would be if it were exercised by the developer, would delay the entire project?
Well, it would depend upon what, they have to justify what is being delayed. Um, they have to provide us notice and an explanation. And yes, it might delay the entire project.
By how much?
It'll depend what the nature of the force majeure is. I mean, it would be, uh, the delay caused by the extreme event would, we, one would have to consider the specific facts at the time. For instance, if it's a pandemic, it can be much longer. If it's an earthquake, who knows how long it would take to get back on track. But, um, that's, one would have to know the specific facts and there's just many, uh, different things that could come up.
Okay, so, so just concluding the questions, I've got some concerns about this, but mostly I, I want to avoid repeating what happened on the West End where the developer used a force majeure clause against us with a significant rewriting of the contract to benefit the developers. So how are we preventing that outcome from, in, in the way we're drafting this force majeure clause?
I don't know that it can be, that that kind of thing can be prevented simply because we never concluded that the force majeure claim was justifiable in that case. And I don't think such a situation would be justifiable in this one. Um, and so I don't think there's really a way to draft around it when you have a clause that actually says what it should say. Um, and that's what this one does. I think, like, but the, the overall circumstances of this are less likely in this situation partly because there is a lender there who's gonna continue and to insist that the developer complete the project. And, and support our interest in getting the project moving.
Okay, my, my only suggestion would be we get something in value, a value in return for adding a force majeure clause. It doesn't sound like what we are, all we're doing is sort of limiting the damage after it's, after it's, um, triggered by the developer. So I would just, oh, I would ask that in negotiating this, that we get something of benefit to the city in return for this. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
I was gonna ask Wyatt, whether we have any indication of problems with the project or whether their development is proceeding and they're gonna submit site plan soon?
No, all indications are that they're moving ahead. And this is one item that is, um, actually holding them up in terms of getting their financing. But I think everything else is in place and this is the, uh, the one piece that they're asking, uh, for us to sign off on.
Got it. Thank you.
So let me ask a question. Carol, so this is dealing with the clawback of the city property, is that right?
That's correct.
So how come there's all these different milestones about above-grade construction commences and all that? Wouldn't that all have occurred by then? I'm, I'm trying to sort of sort out how all this comes together. Like, when is the actual conveyance of the land contemplated?
The conveyance of a la, of the land, the closing will occur before any of these things happen. So what happens is first they have to sort out all the title issues and, uh, and the restrictions and make sure that they have a legal right to proceed um, with the sep, with the setback requirements, the parking restriction, all the things that were in the chain of title for the land. That's step one. Once they've managed to deal with all that, then there will be a closing on the property. And then the question is simply whether they proceed reasonably to complete the project. And if they do not, then the city has a right to, uh, terminate the agreement and get their pro, get the property back. However, um, and that's when the force majeure would apply. In other words, if they can't get a sheeting and shoring permit or they can't complete the work under it because there's been a sinkhole in a cavern or something, then they might get more time to complete the sheeting and shoring before the city can jump in.
So, but we could get the property back after they So, but we could get the property back after they've purchased it. They start to do foundation work. They've dug a giant hole. They're putting up sheeting and shoring. And it's contemplated that we could buy the property back in the middle of like sheeting and shoring?
Yes, but it only occurs if they haven't completed the work in a reasonable amount of time. I think if you look at these amounts of time, they have plenty of time to complete their work. What we were trying to guard against was the fact that the project stalls completely and just isn't moving forward. And the city has a half-built project and has lost its parking lot for no purpose, with no parking being replaced.
Got it. I mean, to my mind, the risk is that they don't start, but once they've started, I think the risk is pretty minimal. Like, nobody's going to dig a monster hole, pour concrete in it and then just stop.
I, I agree. And I think that they're, they're unlikely to do that. And as I said a couple of times, if they are in that process, they're spending money that they've borrowed and they need to complete that project or the lender's going to be enforcing their timelines.
Well, also, I'm not even sure we want it back. I mean, if we got one quarter of a hole with concrete poured in it and someone else has got the other three quarters, I'm not sure we really want to own a quarter of a hole.
That may be the case, and we would not have to proceed at that point if we didn't want to get it back.
Got it. Any other questions on this item? All right. Thank you, Ms. McCroskey. Let's move on to the last item on the agenda. This relates to COG and DC statehood. This is your item, Mr. Snyder. Do you want to speak to it?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I think everybody knows, DC statehood is a major issue with the possibility of federal action on it that had never occurred before. The Council of Government's Board of Directors will have a resolution before it in April. And because it's such a large issue, wanted to take it back to the council and get direction from the council as to how you'd like to vote. You have a resolution in front of you, but I've been advised by COG that the resolution may change. They've not provided us the new resolution, so maybe we can send it out to folks at that point. But I just thought an up or down, you know, sort of direction from council would be, would be helpful. So that's where we are, DC statehood.
Okay. Do you have any recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, I've thought about it and from a standpoint of, of us, I, I, you know, I can't think of a reason to oppose it. I have some questions about how it might operate, you know, in terms of the, the sort of the regional everything from the metro compact to other things where I think it's assumed that, you know, the district is treated as, you know, sort of a quasi-jurisdiction, if you will, not quite at the state level. But for many purposes, it has already been treated as a state. So, I mean, I, I would plan to vote for it on the basis of my role as representing the city, but I wanted the council to just say whether they would disagree with that approach.
All right, let's open it up to comments, questions.
I support it. Thank you.
Okay, other, Mayor Conley?
Yeah, I, I support it also, and I thank Mr. Snyder for bringing this forward. So thanks for voting positively.
Any other comments?
I was just going to add, obviously I want to see the end result, but I'm in support of the concept of DC statehood as well.
All right. Any other comments?
You got my support. Thanks, Dave.
All right.
Yep, yep, sounds good to me.
All right. Well, I think you got your answer. If you could, Dave, provide to all of us the final version. Hopefully with enough time, if there are any changes to, for us to digest them, but I think you got your answer there.
Okay. Thanks very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to council schedule and requests and comments. Any scheduling questions, comments? Anything else before we adjourn? Yes, Ms. Hiscott?
Just a quick comment from the ETS, or ETS had a presentation last week from an organization that provides environmental home assessments and how to, and then actual products to seniors, disabled and lower income families' homes. And we're going to provide, Kate Walker and I are going to provide more information to our Health and Human Services and try to work some of that information through our city residents and hopefully to provide them some better products and some more environmental sustainability in our homes.
All right, that sounds great. Thank, thank you.
Thank you for raising that. And there's some really good value for our homeowners. And so we do want to help get the word out. And so thank you for raising that.
Ms. Hardy?
On budget, so tonight we covered police, HHS and DPW. Is, are all the other departments next week or is there some other order?
Well, we might want to triage it and it's probably something we could discuss at the mayor's meeting. You know, we have a lot of departments and so I, you know, to use the council's time most effectively, we might try to tailor it to where we, where we think we have probably the biggest policy issues to work through.
And then stormwater, which was originally on for tonight, so I'm glad we did move it, but is that on for next week then?
It is. So my thought is we would hear their report and, and then Mr. Bradley can also be there to discuss the implementation of it.
And as it relates to budget, I guess it'd be nice to know if there are specific things that they make recommendations for that we need to consider in the budget cycle, so maybe for them to pay special attention to that.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
In the same vein of listing on the calendar, the Wednesday, April 7th, Town Hall for 1001 West Broad. To also list the April 21st Town Hall that we learned about tonight for the One City Center application.
Yes, we can add that to the schedule.
And have we, we haven't gotten a census number. I've just read in a couple of places that we have 15,300 people in Falls Church. And I wonder where that number comes from? Have we gotten any feedback about what the census counted us as?
Not that I have seen. We use the census estimates from 2019. And that's at 14,700 or thereabouts. And so that's, those are the number, that's the number we typically are using.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, but I've seen the 15,000 number a couple of places. I just wondered where it came from. Okay.
All right. Any other comments, questions, or should we adjourn? Mr. Snyder?
Just real quick, I saw a rating of suburban communities. Maybe everybody's aware of it. I'm trying to remember where I got it from, but we're the second most livable suburban community in America. I don't know if you, anybody picked that up, but.
It's the National Realtor Association.
Yeah.
Publication.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, that sort of thing shouldn't, shouldn't just be glossed over. I think it's resulted a lot of work and bar citizens and, you know, elected officials. So anyway, just a comment.
All right. Wyatt, maybe that can go out in some kind of press from the city?
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Any last words before we adjourn? All right, let's call it a night, shall we?
Okay. Good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay safe.